Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the meeting of the planning board. And thank you all for coming on a off night. And Gail, thank you for making that happen. I understand it was a little bit harder than, easier said than done. So I appreciate Mark and Town Clerk and Gail making that happen. Happy post 4th of July. I'll call the meeting to order and let's take a roll call. Laura Tenney?
Here.
Peter Morton?
Here.
Sue Felrick?
Here.
Sarah Creighton's here.
Gordon Rooster?
Here.
Mary Bulley?
Yeah.
And Chris Olney is absent so far. Great, so the first order of business was we are going to resume the, continue the public hearing for, is it FOTH?
FOTH.
FOTH, I was corrected. I apologize.
Hey, you're forgetting that right.
You're welcome.
Infrastructure Environmental LLC for Reed Park, Morse Fisherman's Pier, and Phase 2 Tuck's Point Public Dock Expansion. And if nobody objects, let's start with Tuck's Point because we did it the other way around and kind of had to rush for Tuck's Point last time. And we did a site walk last Monday to the three sites. So I think the board has pretty good sense of what's planned and what is, what's proposed. So I guess the question would be first, does the applicant, the town or FOTH on Tuck's Point have any new information or any additional information you want to present?
This is Nate. Excuse me.
Hi Nate.
I'd say just one clarification I made in the field last week. When I said there was going to be a form liner facade over the side. We are actually showing it as granite stones going over the side of the new infill area and the concrete abutment.
Right.
So just one clarification from the site visit last week.
Okay.
That is base bid versus doing it as an alternate.
Great. Thank you Nate. Okay. Any other important changes or clarifications on that project? There he is, Chris Olney is here. We talked about a number of possible, or several possible conditions for that permit. I don't know if you're not here. I believe it was to, the wall area that Nate just described having that be granted was one of them. So I guess if the plans show that, then we're good on that. And the other was to have a process or a member of the team to ensure that the historic elements of the railings and the detailing is in fact preserved as was represented, I guess.
Nate?
Yes.
Yep, that basically captures the comment about architectural integrity of millwork considering is there dismantling the rotunda itself if they find any rot or conditions that need to be addressed. They would have that on board for that. And if there was any detailing of the site ramp itself that required the landscape architect, that we talked about bringing both the landscape architect and an architect in a limited scope to advise with the kind of preservation of the structure.
So Laura, like the wording, the condition would be something like, you know, consistent historic railings and trim for the rotunda in area.
Architectural elements?
Architectural elements, you know, consistent with the existing.
Well consistently, we would follow the same profiles that are actually established out there.
Yes.
So they would have to document all that.
And then, and then for the ramp, same kind of wording.
Same kind of wording, yeah.
Yeah.
Consistent, you know, elements of granite blocks along the sides of the elevated ramps
to the raised rotunda.
Yes, the detailing of the ramping specifically.
So those would be kind of the way, how we word the two conditions.
Yeah, okay. Any other?
One question, Sarah.
Yeah.
Do we get to look at the final plans when they're done? To see that these conditions actually are incorporated in the design itself?
Has built?
No, not as built. This is the designed construction drawings prior to becoming a as-built condition. So that we understand it was done.
Question. Nate, where are we on actually, is he still on?
Yep. Yeah, sorry, I'm on video doing dinner right now.
I have so many screens, I can't tell where you are.
Yep. I would say that's where my role comes in, ensuring that, you know, we're meeting the conditions of, you know, any, whether it's ConCom, Planning Board, and ensuring that FOTH has incorporated all of those conditions into the design set. Rotunda plans, Tuck's Point plans are, I'd say a 60% permitting set, but, you know, I don't think there's a lot, you know, there's some structural details I think we need to work out, but the general, you know, concept is on, is on the plans. Ben, do you have, can you elaborate on that a little more?
Yeah, I was just gonna say as a follow-up to Nate too. All of those, like special permit, ConCom conditions, those all get carried into the bid set and then our requirement for the contractor to follow when, when they go into construction. So if we were working with the town or giving any direction to the town, we make sure that all those are followed for sure.
Sarah? Let me just finish on this, I think Gordon, most of them.
So is there, is there a formal process by which we can see that the conditions have been met? Either through the design documentation or the physical reconstruction?
I think it'll be a little bit of all, so. Anything that is in those special conditions, if in those requirements you say we need proof of, proof of following as a, after construction or anything that needs to be submitted prior to construction, the call back can be handled, handled on our end too. And it's just part of the contract with the contractor.
We could request.
Yeah, Gordon, I would offer that, you know, if, once we get the final, we'll say 90% design set, you know, so, you know, more or less the town's final review before issuing the bid set that, you know, I can let the planning board know and if you wanted to come in and review the plans, you know, that'd be certainly something we could accommodate.
Yeah. So I think this is a little different than, say, cell signaling. Whereas cell signaling, we have a third party working on our behalf, given the technical nature of the project. And we may have a performance bond to ensure that the, what was represented to us is in fact constructive. Or that in its, often it's sufficient value to finish it as it was proposed, if that's what's needed. So that's one of the, I mean, that's another, another topic, but it's a diff, but this is a little different because it's the town, so.
Laura? I think we're also talking about the detailing of the project. Cell signaling, we're looking at a much larger impact to the town. This is really getting down to the levels of the construction details.
Right.
And getting those right, which I think, you know, I'm comfortable if Nate is looking out for, knows where we need architectural, landscape, site elements to be detailed. And if we come in at, you know, not quite 100% in the CDs and have a chance to page term with them, that makes sense.
Yeah, and 90% CD would show us what we need to see.
Yeah.
Right. Any other comments from the board?
So does the building inspector actually issue a building permit for this?
Presume so.
Should.
So is that another level of review?
Yeah, or some. But that's just for compliance with codes, right?
Well, yes.
Building inspector doesn't, doesn't.
He'll look at anything, any of our conditions, he'll, he can do it back.
That's true. Mary?
So I wasn't able to be here at last meeting, but I watched the video in its entirety. Just an overarching question that, have the numbers been run? I know you raised it, I believe you said for a hundred-year storm. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the rotunda would actually only last 50 years? Is that correct?
I think for design purposes, we have it set for what the materials are, can handle. So that 50-year lifespan, it's like a, the rotunda that's there has been in place for a lot longer too. So we give it 50 years, that's standard for wood and timber elements. But that's not always the case, most of the time it lasts a while longer. So I think as part of this like phasing approach to using steel elements allows us to come back in the future too, if we decide to, town decides to raise the rotunda again with the changes in sea level rise. So that's why that bottom section's made of steel and then the top section, the rotunda, is matching the existing conditions that are out there. Show the, like the historic rotunda elements.
If I, if I could add to that just a little, sorry to jump in, Jeremy Packard for FOTH. Ben, that was a good answer, but I just want to clarify a little more. It's the difference between service life and design storm, right? So it's designed for the 100-year storm and all the elements you would see during that, the wind and the waves. But as Ben mentioned, the materials have what we call 50-year service life, right? So someone can expect to need to do some major rehabilitation at that 50-year mark, even though it is designed for 100-year storm.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if there was options discussed with, you know, for aesthetic reasons and cost and everything else, that if the actual rotunda starts to rot or whatever the term may be after 50 years, why at this point are we building for the 100-year storm? If we could perhaps phase it with raising it up as opposed to doing it all alone?
I think I would defer that question to the select board. That was, you know, pretty thoroughly vetted and discussed with the select board. We did, went through with, I believe, three, call it four, design options. And the select board chose to raise it in place up to the 5 feet.
Okay, so they would have the cost analysis and all of that?
Yep, and that's online, it's on the, I believe that's right on. Yeah, there's a link on the homepage that brings you to the analysis that was done.
Okay, thank you.
Anne?
For what little it's worth, the rotunda has been significantly repaired in the 35 years that I've been twice. So it's a question of wood near water. My other point, if I may, is do you have something specific saying that the junction of the ramp to the floats and the ramp of the rotunda will be redone in the, following the model of the rest of the railings and architecture? Because it's currently a very temporary structure.
Yeah, I think that's our intent, is to have, is to not have the temporary.
I just want to make sure that that's the language, yeah. That was something needed to be made.
And if I can add that to a condition.
Yeah.
So that's the top of the ramp where it turns left off the rotunda and there's a wooden section that was like a repair. So I'll say something like the wooden section at the top of the ramp shall be repaired, replaced
With, replaced with historic.
With the historic.
Yeah. It seems like taking a, you know, photographing this extensively before it's dismantled would be an important thing. Okay, any other comments from the public on the Tuck's Point? Yes. Dean?
Yes, hi, Dean Hottus from 40 East Street. I had a couple of questions. I guess the first one is if there's a link to these plans somewhere, the 60% complete? Or is it just the, the study?
There, I believe there's a link to our packet today, the last meeting, which has a, all of the applications. And I can double check right now while we're looking for.
Because I would like to get a copy, right, if I could. I'll pick it up at the town hall or if you need it. But a couple of things, in reviewing the study, you know, we've since gotten new guidance to design for a 2-foot sea level rise by the year 2100. And I know a 2-foot sea level rise, and we also want to increase the freeboard on the existing.
Can you just repeat that, because you kind of faded out?
The current guidance is to plan for a 2-foot sea level rise by the year 2100. And we also, so you want to raise it at least that. And then you want to increase the freeboard, maybe from what it is now, another foot. I'm seeing about a 3-foot would get us through the year 2100. But, you know, I don't know if that 5-foot edict was just something the selectmen came up with or whether there was some engineering background. Because I think mitigating this height is key to the aesthetic success. So that was the one question. Can we reduce it? The study also, the future cost estimate, the, you know, for, for raising it in two phases, that future cost seem to be very conservative or aggressive. And I'm wondering if it included reusing the existing piles or replacing the piles again? That was one question. And the second, is the escalation relative? Because, you know, costs 10 years from now will go up 20%, but also the tax rate, you know, all the other costs are going to go up too, so it's relative. You know, so a $30 million project today might cost $40 million in 20 years, but we'll, we'll have made that much more money, you know, in that time due to our own inflation. So that was the, the second point and that may have skewed whether to do this in two phases. And, because if you mitigate, any, any foot you can reduce on raising this, it's going to save money now on the ramp start. Because I'm not sure if the ramp is going to be slow cut or extended out and stay level? Or if it's a combination of both? So those are the three things that I had questioned. And the bottom line, I want to caution, I would be more mindful of the visual impacts than the cost on how much to raise this thing.
Okay, can I just take up FOTH to respond to the, how the mitigation height for Phase 1 was selected?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to the height a bit. As Peter mentioned, there are, we do have a sea level rise, substantive sea level rise with current models, depending on what 20 you look at, through 2100. And so what I think's missed there in calculations about the 2 feet plus the freeboard is with a greater water depth, you have the ability to support a greater wave height too, right? So you have that still water that rises, but then you have a larger wave that's of course coming through. And the idea is to give the, the bottom of those stringers some freeboard from the crust of that increased wave height, right? So it's not just a strictly a 1-to-1. There is coastal analysis that goes into that to make sure we get up above that 100-year wave crest.
Okay. So.
The second question, I'm just gonna let him, hold on, let's let him answer your other question, which was why, how is, I think you've explained this before, but the Phase 2, his question was, is it going to add, are we going to redo pilings or are we going to add to the existing pilings?
I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn that one over to Ben, who's doing a lot of the estimate work.
Yeah, so we, with them being steel piles, the initial design was to extend those existing piles up so you'll have the same loading capacity, you know, be able to get that height elevation. So it would be stripping back, installing the pile extensions, and then installing the existing steel structure again with the timber facade and the railings zoned up to match kind of what's existing there.
Okay, so, so we are going to reuse the piles that we're going to put in.
Yeah, there will be, there will be new piles, so there's being pile extensions, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, again, I just wanted to caution that sometime, and I'm the finance committee, and I'm saying costs aren't as big an issue as the visual impact here. So that, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? And I did look, there is a, there are some renderings on the, if you Google Manchester by the Sea Rotunda, there's a quite extensive page that has some images. Any other comments? Okay, on this one, are we ready to close the public hearing? Any object to?
Okay, what, a move that we close the public hearing?
Public hearing for the Tuck's Point Public Dock Facility.
Second.
Okay, take a roll call vote, Laura?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Sarah was yes?
Yes.
Gordon? Mary?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So we've closed that public hearing. What we will do is Mark will come up with some draft conditions and then we will finalize the permit. Okay, we're going to jump now to the Morse Pier Fisherman's Dock. I think we'll take them together, because they're kind of together, if you don't mind. And the Reed Park Floating Dock Extension. Additional new information from both or Brian or Nate or anybody?
Yeah, so Jeremy Packard again for FOTH. We, following the last, following the last meeting, we spoke about the arborist request. And what has been accepted on past projects, and we'd like to work into the condition on this one, is that we consult with and have the town arborist on site. I understand that Manchester does have a town arborist, I think, associated with the DPW. And so he will be onsite during the excavation of that utility trench through Reed Park and kind of directing us in, in real time and making evaluations as to make sure that the health of those two trees in park are maintained both during construction and that it is viable following construction and we're not going to have any effect on the health of those trees. So that is, that is a condition that we are, you know, that we expect to be worked into this. And we hope that that is amenable to the board as far as the arborist request. And beyond that, there are no changes to the proposed projects at this time.
Okay. Other questions or thoughts from the board? Mary?
My first question is just kind of processed. The, the public hearing has for Reed Park, Section 28 under Chapter 91. I know for Morse Pier, it's Section 18 as per our bylaws. I'm wondering why we're referencing Section 28? Which is a whole different section in Chapter 91? Just to do with like Connecticut waters or something.
Uh, Ford?
FOTH, do you have a comment on, so?
Yeah, so I mean, all, both projects will be licensed and authorized in the same kind of avenues, right? So we have, obviously the planning board hearing, we're at both of these now. We have notice of intent process for both. Morse Pier's already been through that. Reed Park, we have a MEPA filing that just went in. That'll be in the environmental monitor this week. Following that MEPA filing, again, they're all, MEPA is the only ones you need to repark. And then both Morse and Reed, notice of intent, Chapter 91, and our report authorization for all of us.
So they should be both Section 18?
The part, the project overview says Section 18, I suppose.
I'm just concerned that our public hearing says 28 and it's 18. So I'm just, I just, we need clarification if our posting is incorrect.
Hi, sorry, I'm Fiona Barney with FOTH. I'm double checking, but it may have been a typo. I'm looking into it and I will get back to you in a second.
Okay.
Should I ask my other questions or?
Absolutely.
So again, I wasn't able to be here, but I listened to the meeting. So I didn't see in the meeting packet if we have ConCom's order of conditions that we can look at. Do we have that anywhere?
We do have the order from Morse, not for Reed.
Okay, is it possible for us to get a copy of that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I know it was raised at last meeting and I would reiterate that it's important to get some sort of financial impact analysis, cost benefit analysis. I know there was numbers thrown out that, I know the harbor master said, you know, trying to raise money for dredging and things like that. So I think if we could get some solid numbers on that, that would be great. I know it was mentioned at the last meeting. I think it would also be helpful if we could get what grants, and I don't know if this is from you guys or who it's from, but what grants are anticipated for these projects? And if they're linked to the MBTA 48 housing or not? And if we could get a cost, I didn't see any costs in the applications. Do we have a cost breakdown of, of kind of flow, how much the project would cost? And then potentially what the taxpayer burden would be for these projects?
We do have construction cost estimates as well, yeah.
That'd be great.
Are they in our submission or not?
I didn't.
I don't believe they're included in the submission, no.
See it in there? I know that it was asked at the meeting that if we could get a rendering of the, of the visual of how it would look from downtown with these added pilings, et cetera. And then in the, and I'd have to look up quickly, I forget if it was the Morse or the Reed Park, it said that there would be unsightly components of the development. But then it states that the project does not provide landscaping. So how, how is the town to proceed with, I guess, first of all, what is, what are the unsightly components? And then is that cost on the town to landscape to cover?
No, the unsightly components is referring to during construction, right? There's, there's just, there's machines, there's, you know, pile driver barges, that kind of stuff. There's work going on at the time during the actual installation. These being floating dock projects, there's no landscaping. I mean, the, the grass in Reed Park would be restored following the, you know, the utility trenching. That would all be restored, reseeded, there's existing irrigation. We could even saw that, just to make sure that's like insubramification. But beyond that, it's, you know, it's, it's all a water-based project and really nothing to be seen following construction except the fine work.
Okay, I, yeah, thank you. I was, didn't know if it referenced to the pump out, you know, area or anything like that. If that's unsightly, I don't know, I'm not a purger.
Sorry, I just have a quick question. Can you please repeat your question about the section for Chapter 91? I'm seeing in our applications, we did include Section 18. So I'm just curious if it was a part of the public notice that the planning board published?
Yeah, so it's, it's the, I'm sorry, it's the planning board notice, public notice, public hearing notice. So that, that may be.
I think the planning board may publish that.
Yeah, I, that's probably on our end. And I did want to just note that you referenced our zoning bylaws from our old bylaws. The zoning bylaw, I think you referenced 4.1.10J and the new bylaw is. Wait, I think I have it, it's 4.2F1.
Is there a substantive change, just other than numbering? Is there a substantive change, just other than numbering?
Um, no, it references our use table, um, and I did have an overall question, not for the consultants, but our use table, and I think actually the application references this special permit, and I was looking for clarity, because I thought chapter ninety-one was just looking for recommendations from the planning board. Are we doing a special permit?
I think we looked into that, it's a special permit.
Yeah, the, our local bylaw requires the special permit, it has nothing to do with chapter ninety-one.
Okay, because our use table says comments from the planning.
Yep, so right, they, they're.
Well, they, they ask for comments, but in addition to that, most towns don't have this requirement, that you have to go through the planning board to install docks or do any work in the, uh, intertidal zone. So, because we do, it is required for this, these applications to, to come to the planning board, so, but that's a local requirement, not state requirement.
Okay, so, um, the Mary's raised a couple of, reiterated a couple of things that have come up a couple of times, so before we ask that, we should get a consensus about whether we think that these are things that we should have. Um, one was the rendering, uh, one was the, um, financial analysis, one is grants anticipated, um, and construction costs. Um, before we weigh in on that, because I think we have to make sure we have a consensus that we want to ask the applicant to do that, rather than just one of us asking for that. Um, I did ask, um, I did talk with Sarah Melish, Chair of the Finance Committee, about whether they had weighed in on this. Um, and I believe that they were approached, um, before the application, um, went to us, and they did have a detailed discussion about that, and they, um, her recollection in a conversation, what, which might be, um, she was gonna clarify and then write us a letter, so, um, was that they had reviewed both of them, and that Reed Park they were in favor of, and they were, they kind of withheld endorsement on the, um, Morse Pier. So, um, they have looked at it, but, um, she thought that it would be good to update the financial analysis, um, and have a FINCOM weigh in on it. So that, that was her opinion, um, that doesn't have to be our opinion, so, um, the, uh, and I'm gonna take a comment from Dean, because he's on the FINCOM. Unless you, is that, or is that a holdover from your prior meeting? Oh, you're a mute.
You're muted, Dean.
There we go. At the Finance Committee, we discussed whether, um, to, uh, go after the funding, uh, the planning stage. We, we didn't really discuss any concrete project, to my knowledge. I mean, there was, there's been a bunch of versions, but nothing official, I mean, there was a version to go along the railroad tracks and put a pump-out station, there was a version to go around the front over to the fish pier, um, but it was all just, um, I mean, I didn't approve it, but the board, you know, I was a dissenter, but we approved to, to, uh, go forward with the study.
Okay, great.
Sarah, can I just clarify one of your things you're gonna ask, I wasn't asking for the cost of the, for the project co, I mean, for the construction cost, I was asking for the cost of the project, so if the project is, I'm just making up numbers, if the project is three million, we get a grant for one million and the taxpayers, what's the net for the taxpayers? If there is any.
Yeah. I understand.
So, uh, the engineering estimate for Fisherman's Facility, the original one was five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The grant opportunity for that, since we received a grant for the engineering permitting, would be eighty percent of that cost for the Seaport Economic Council. So, eighty percent of that, whatever the total amount's going to be, five eighty, five hundred and eighty thousand, less or more, will come from the Seaport Economic Council, with caveat.
So, and then the twenty percent is?
That's the tax share.
Taxpayers, okay, and then what about Reed Park?
Reed Park's a hundred percent funded through a state and federal grant.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
So I'm just curious, because we've, we've had this conversation a couple of times now about the financial analysis. Is something in writing somewhere that, that defines that, and just so that we can see it? I mean, it's just, I, not that I, I, I mean, I, I know you've been working on this for a long time, but I just think helpful if there is documentation as to what those numbers are.
So, uh, as far as financial analysis, I, I'm not really sure exactly what analysis or what, or what we're on as a, for itself, or not. What the, the funding is, well, I don't know.
Right, so if I, sorry to interrupt, but if I could, so, for, personally, it would just be um, documentation of what the grant covers for the Morse Pier, and then what the grant covers for the Reeds, and then also, you had mentioned that there is significant, um, revenue generating implications from the, the Reed Park Pier, and it'd be nice that we talked about whether you could possibly provide a, a, a projection as to what that might be.
Yeah, I actually had that, and I've, I've documented and published that.
Read, okay.
In, in my newsletter and then into the cricket, so, I can afford it, uh, to all of you, with those projections.
Yeah, I think if, especially if it's, exists, let's get it in part, as part of the application, that would be great.
Let's go.
And then I think, uh, we should pass, as soon as we get it, we should just pass it to the FINCOM, they're supposed, they, you know, they are, and if they have comments about, you know, financial analysis is one of the criteria of a special permit, and, uh, the, the dock applications are, sort of have a narrative. So that's my, I, that, I would agree, that's a summary of the first costs, the operating upside, downside, and maintenance costs, that would be helpful, so that people understand, um, what are.
Like the risk, yeah, if there is risk, yeah.
And, um, and I do think that it's important that, we're gonna need those numbers anyway as we think about, um, the, uh, MBTA zoning, um, upsides, downsides, so, that would be helpful for that too.
Well, the MBTA, uh, if, if the town and state don't come to accord, they'll, all of the state funding will be gone for all three projects. There'll be no million dollars for tucks, there'll be now eighty percent for, um, Fisherman's Facility, and, uh, we're already spending state money to buy materials to build floats.
Okay, so is there agreement among the board that a financial summary, um, from, would be, uh, an addendum to this app, to these applications would be helpful? Is any objections to that? Okay, great, go ahead.
Can I just add on to that or ask the question?
Um, go ahead.
Do you, um, is it sort of economies of scale for how many floating docks or docks that you have for how many employees you need? So if you add twenty-two docks, does that increase the need for, or not?
Uh, I would say on busy days, we may need, rather than, on a weekend, busy day, I'll have three people. It'll be a morning, a swing ship, an afternoon. Depending on, uh, how that rolls out, we may need a swing ship person more days a week. Not Monday, Tuesday, rather than just Saturday, Sunday, maybe Thursday through Sunday, or Wednesday through Sunday. The business will dictate that.
So could that just be? Could I?
Yeah.
Could something along those lines be added to the analysis of financial?
Okay, um, I have a couple other, uh, questions, but we're, go ahead, Lauren.
Uh, okay, shifting gears a little bit, but given that this is on the water, it's a little bit unusual for us as a planning board to look at, so, um, from the point of, you know, stakeholders, whether that be the Harbor Management Plan Advisory Group, or perhaps the Commercial Fleet, um, other, you know, boating associations, if there were, um, letters of support, say, from any of those groups, I think that would help us, um, you know, kind of weigh the benefits of it, even, this might sound a little odd at first, but even the Bike and Ped Committee might weigh in on this, because it, in the point of view of activating downtown, and we're talking about an accessible route out onto the docks, um, this could be a real, you know, public benefit. So, that was my first comment, was that, you know, maybe, um, this application could be strengthened by having some, um, you know, some support from various stakeholder groups, um, voters and beyond. Uh, the second one, which really gets to the chapter ninety-one public benefit, um, I can certainly see how it's serving voters, um, and serving non-voters, and I think it's important that it, that the non-voters' benefits of this plan be given, you know, kind of equal weight, so, um, making the route accessible, we talked about the potential of adding some bump outs where, you know, people might sit, and I think that the, um, that those benefits, there need to be no-cost benefits for people to come and enjoy the piers, not just the recreational boaters tying up to it, that's a great benefit for, for, um, voters, but, you know, that it needs to serve everybody, and then there shouldn't be a, a cost associated with, to the, to the users of that. So I would want to, um, make a condition, some conditions on that kind of no-cost public, non-voter, uh, benefits, uh, to the docks. And the last thing, just a response to the, um, arborist, I'm fine with the town arborist reviewing the, um, route for the utility trenching. I do think, given that we have two high-value mature trees on that site, that if the town arborist feels that, um, an independent arborist, um, be onsite during that trenching itself with an air spade and any appropriate tools to actually do some work to preserve the health of those trees, that that would be a condition of the work as well. Thank you.
Other comments from others or questions? I have a couple, um, one is for both, um, did you consider, um, the area of the, I'm gonna share my screen. This, um, I have this one here. The area here, uh, this, this area here, um, I can see that, um, it, is there any possibility of you, of not using piles for that area? Um, pulling it earlier in the season, if it's storm, you know, if storms are coming, kind of thing, um, and in order to, and, or potentially to not have piles at the ends of those, um, uh, piers? I, I guess, I guess the larger question is, is there a way to reduce the additional piers, particularly in the view quarter?
Yeah, and I, I know the, the piles are contentious issue out here in the inner harbor, given the view, um, and we really did everything we could to try to minimize, uh, the number, number that we're proposing already, right, that was done at one meridional stage, uh, before we even approached, um, you know, any, any, uh, regulators and committees. Um, the problem that with, like, bottom anchors is you always have some, just the nature of the hardware, you have some degree of wiggle room there, right? And these loads are all placed, uh, fairly precisely to provide serviceability as well as, um, clearance from the mudline, um, you know, for, to, to meet regulatory requirements. Um, and then also, you have this significant tide swing here, right? Not even including, I mean, just about a regular sunny day tide, um, you know, you've got nine-foot tides up here, and then if you add in, and you cut a storm surge, right, like, that's where you need to account for, um, uh, you know, tides and storm surges and what that elevation is with the pile cutoff elevation. So, you know, if there's a storm surge that comes in and everything raises, and they're still held, um, right in place at the top of those piles. Uh, the problem you have with the bottom anchors is that you would have to build that, that room that was supposed to move into the pile hardware itself, which just introduces more, um, you know, more wiggle room, for, for lack of a better term. Um, and so given the, given the location, the proximity to shoreline, uh, offset from the mudline, um, bottom anchors are really not a feasible option in this, in this area.
So how is it that just, uh, that we, until five years ago, Tuck's Point had bottom anchor, anchors, the Boat Club has body anchors, the existing Fisherman's Pier has bottom anchors, the Yacht Club has bottom anchors. So, why, why this big switch to the piers, um?
Well, to be, um, I mean, regular, regular sort of view and regulations generally have gotten a lot tighter, right? So you used to see, um, you know, yellow grass bed, beds, you would see these bottom anchors, and if you looked in aerial view, you would see kind of that radius around each mooring or around each floe or whatever it was, and that's from the hardware, hardware just kind of dragging around in that, um, you know, dragging substrate. And, um, so over time, uh, you know, engineering improves, recognize the, uh, the impacts we're having on the environment, um, you know, regulatory gets a little tighter, and these are all reasons why, uh, things are kind of moving more towards a positive or destruction, um, rather than these loose, uh, loose bottom anchors. Um, as far as the ones at Tuck's Point, I can't speak to some of those other locations, but they don't, they don't have the proximity to the shoreline, um, in some cases that these ones do, I mean, these ones are, are, I'm not gonna say threaded needle, but it's, you know, we really did what we could to maximize the available water sheet and reduce congestion and all that stuff that we talked about at the first meeting. Um, you know, so I, I can't speak to exactly those other sites you're talking about, but I do know that, um, we've kind of gotten away from, from bottom anchors in, in most applications.
Okay, uh, Brian, did you have anything additional, uh?
I, I would say Tuck's, when that failed, it was a non-compliant facility, we had to get permitted for that. Uh, you couldn't drive with pilings there, there's, they didn't go deep enough to support those floats and to support that ramp. You can't have a, uh, bottom moored float system with a ramp like that, the ramp would be, uh, we'd lose it every year because of the movement and stress and strain, but, uh, so steel pilings, you know, wood to me is a lot better, but you can't put wood pilings into, um, bedrock, we had to go with rock-sucking plowings as a choice. Pilings at Reed Park, um, again, the proximity to the shoreline, the movement of, of facility when it's on a bottom moored system, uh, the number of feet that would move, uh, move in and out of compliance with, um, distance from the substrate, and I frankly wouldn't want to have three hundred feet of boats tied up to, uh, where it floats on a windy day out of the south, because they'd all be up on the shore near the railroad tracks.
Yeah, I'm only asking about the, I'm, about the connector between the commercial and the, um, which seems to me as a walkway, it could be shut, if there's, you know, that, that's the section as well as the ends of the commercial, so.
It's, there's, when you have a fixed and a fixed, or a fixed, you don't attach, the only way you attach the, uh, uh, bottom moored float systems would be if there were significant distance in between the two, then you would have, uh, a ramp of some sort that could move to it, that would be the only way you could do it. You can't have the movement, because those floats will hit against the, um, piling system and against the boats that are on the floats on the power load system. They don't mix that.
Um, okay, my second que, uh, do you have another problem? My other question is about, um, you mentioned that the, that the area I just pulled up on the screen is gonna be reserved for commercial vessels. What's a commercial vessel?
Well, according to our rules and regulations, fishing lobster boats, um, vessels engaged fisheries, uh, the standard for us is that if you're, you have to have a federal or state commercial fishing permit, and you have to be able to show landing tickets, which are proof that you are catching fish, landing, but paying taxes on, on, on what you were.
So what about, so we know that there's also, um, commercial vessels are those that service moorings, and that's important for the harbor. What if I just, what if as, um, I want to convert my commercial fishing boat to a commercial, uh, deep sea fishing, where I'm gonna bring ten people in who are gonna park, and then I take them out deep sea fishing or whale watching? That would be a commercial use, right? So that, my point is that the assertion that there isn't parking, we're not bringing in parking, uh, burden to the town in the future, it's hard to know that for sure, right?
It, absolutely, it's not, but you can certainly put in there, uh, restrict fisheries that are allowed to use that facility.
So they're, they're allowed to use it and then, as long as they keep a commercial, uh, registration? Regardless of whether they're fishing or whether.
Commercial fishing. Commercial fishing license.
So that dock is for commercial fishing or, I guess.
Yeah, Morse pier fishermen's facility.
So then the scenario that Sarah just suggested could not happen. That the deep sea fishing.
Right, so you couldn't have whale watch boats. Couldn't have.
Deep sea.
Right. And that could be in order of one of the conditions you set.
I guess on the positive side, if you think that's a good use of the harbor and brings people to access to the harbor, then it's a, then it's a good thing. I mean, it's a, it kind of depends on, it's a, it's an unknown to me and that's always a change. Okay. Any, Mary, could you, another question?
So we never resolved, even after your questions, I think it is very important to get a visual rendering of these additional pilings so residents and the board can understand. And then I think it was mentioned at last meeting, but I would reiterate that I don't know how long it's going to take for the harbor management plan to come into effect, but I think perhaps we should consider, some of these decisions should wait until the harbor management plan is in place. If we're talking about deep sea fishing boats, et cetera. It kind of seems like a change of use of the harbor and an expansion of the harbor that maybe we haven't really thought out yet.
So as far as renderings go, there was no money ever in the budget and grant that I wrote or the money approved by CTC for the HN program. So there is no money for that. If the planning board can identify it's money, I don't, I can't come out of the harbor budget. I'm sure I won't have any funding for that, so.
So what's the board's feeling about a rendering?
Rendering is always important, just so you can see it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does it cost? Any idea what the cost to create one of those?
I do, I think it would be. Let me ask a different question, and then I know we haven't resolved that one. But if we were to permit this with, or give it the green light and ask you to take out the pilings at the commercial, at the fishermen's pier in the plan, would the plan be able to move forward and accomplish the goals for the commercial fishermen? And qualify for the funding and all that rest? Or is it a debt? Is, is, are the piers an essential? Without piers, there's no project for the commercial, not Reed Park, the Morse pier piece.
Or where you lose the piles, you lose the floats. So yeah, each pile removed would reduce the proposed flow.
At the, in the Morse pier proposal?
Yes.
Sarah, can I ask you, you brought up a very good point about that one section of pier. Can it be eliminated? I'm not sure everybody knows which section of the pier you're talking about.
Can you share again?
Because in so doing, then we eliminate all the piles associated with it, correct?
Well, there are a lot of piles. There's, there's, how many here along this section?
There's three along that section before it turns the corner.
And then there's three on this corner, two or three on this corner, right?
Yeah, yeah, just because we have to make those corners. Yeah, it's actually the same, it's the same house spacing as the existing Reed Park boats. So the ones to the, to the north there, it's the same, essentially the same spacing, except when you're making those corners.
But then there's a pile at the end of each of these fingers that doesn't exist today.
Correct, yeah.
And then these, these pile, there are piles at the, on the, the low, the mud side of the, this dock.
Land side, yeah.
Land side, thank you, more technical term. So I was wondering about this section here to try to kind of find a middle ground. So when you stand there at low tide, there's a lot going on. And I asked myself and was unable to convince myself either way, whether the pier, the piles would be, you know, an eyesore or whether you'd see right through them. Because there's an awful lot going on there.
A lot of visual activity.
There's a lot of visual stuff already going on. You've got boats and you've got floats and you've got a distant view. And so I haven't, I haven't, and a rendering can capture it either way, right?
Whereas the rendering, are you going to show the rendering with boats tied up there? Which is how you'd see it?
Yeah.
Or just the piles?
Yeah, the boats tied up.
I think you're going to see it both ways. All winter long, you're going to see it with only one or two boats.
So I just think you needed an artist, not a renderer. I mean, that's going to be a complicated rendering.
Well, that's a good point too, Chris, because if a commercial boat is tied up in that spot we're talking about right now, the height of that is probably higher than the pilons.
It's true.
So, I mean.
That's true.
You're not going to be able to see the harbor in that case, yeah.
But actually, in the winter is when you're going to see the pilings and only a few boats, so.
And would people prefer seeing the boats or the harbor? I mean, the boats are attractive also.
Right. Laura?
If the town can find a way to assist with the rendering, I think that's a good idea to help people understand. I personally want to be careful that we don't try to engineer this ourselves, but we like to the experts here. And I think we gave them the design intent, which is minimize the pilings. I believe we talked about wood pilings on this dock, is that right?
This is a wood pile.
These are wood pilings, so they're not going to look like the kind of modern steel pilings. It is going to have that sort of, I don't know if you want to call that quainter, but you know, it's got a more traditional look perhaps for the piles. So I would say if, if the intent is to have a boardwalk that meets in the middle and then you can walk across it, that by not meeting in the middle, you've really lost that public benefit. Now you're just kind of dead ending everywhere and you haven't provided the potential for people to, you know, move from one park to the other, to just stroll along, activate the waterfront, look at the boats, perhaps provide a bump out. So my, I would advocate for helping Buyan find a way to render. You know, picking, picking the right view, whether that be from the street or from Mascanomo Park, sort of, you know, an angled view. I think that would help everybody understand. But I would say let the experts tell us what pilings are needed. And they've already told us they're minimizing it, so I think that intent is there.
Both, can you give us at least a estimate of some sort of a visualization? And then maybe we can use some of the planning money or if we, depending on the amount, I don't know, we can think about whether we might.
Yeah, sure, we can do that.
And as I want to, if you can give us a, I mean, something simple, but.
Just like, just to help me dial in that estimate a little bit. We're talking about one, one perspective from Beach Street? Or two perspectives, one from Beach, one from Mascanomo?
I think one from Beach personally.
That would my, I mean, I agree, but.
I think that's sufficient. I think that's sufficient.
And then, and then you're looking out to the whole harbor. You know, you can see Reed Park to your right, Morse to the left. So one perspective from Beach Street when you stand on the bridge. And then what versions do you want? Are you looking for like a no build, a build?
No, we know what no build look, we know what the existing conditions look like. We can build.
You're right. And so it's, we want alternatives, that's just the way my brain works. All right, so no no build, right? Because you can see that always existing. But then do you want the, one of the boats, one without boats?
Good time.
And then one.
One with boats is like, we only need one, right?
Yeah.
I think one, some boats and whatever, right?
Yeah, one with boats and just a very high level. I mean, I think you could take a iPhone photo and kind of, we're not looking for the, we're not looking for a.
Microsoft's famous thing? I can do that for a hundred.
Okay. I want to just do a couple of quick things. Any other comments from the board? Leah, Laura?
I was also, I meant to say before, if there's a concern about, you know, number and location of piles now and number of and location of proposed, we could also just ask for a plan view that says, that points out the piles existing and proposed.
I think we have that in our document.
Do we have that? Okay.
If you could take, give us that plan view and make those red or something.
Yes, some way that's easy to distinguish any change.
Yeah, that is, you have to kind of go hunting for them.
That's offensive.
What?
Makes it offensive, pick them red.
Um, okay, I see Sarah Pierce, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yes, hi, thank you, Sarah Pierce, tonight, Front Street. I had a couple of questions. One, Laura Penny was mentioning some bump outs. And I just wondered if she could explain that more, what she meant by a bump out? Is that something, how's that built, what's it made of?
Hi, Sarah, so this is Buyan, the harbor master. If you were to go down to Reed Park today, you'd see a float with a tent that meets a new top on it. And that is, we put that there so the staff could have shade and a place to sit while they're working. And what has happened is it's become a very popular destination for people to go down and sit and coffee and look out the harbor. We'll show up and sometimes there'll be three people sitting down there having coffee in the morning or folks telling me they'll go down in the evening and sit there after the staff is gone. So one of the things that was suggested was that as part of the project going down toward the drawbridge, that we put in a couple of these. They don't need to be that big. They could literally be one-third the size of that with one of the benches that we have representative of the bench that we have on the current float going down because it's such a lovely place to go and sit and look out over the harbor.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's great. And then I said one more question. When you talk about commercial boats or vessels, I'm 100% supportive of the commercial fisherman industry. I just wondered, outside of fishing boats, commercial is a broad term. What is the largest, is there like a set limit on what size boats you allow to come into the harbor or that can come into the harbor? Because I guess I'm wondering, yep.
There isn't a size limit vessel that can come into the harbor. There's a size limit that can swing on a mooring. And then as far as length goes, 60 feet is the maximum allowed at Reed Park for docking. There wouldn't be a space for 60-foot lobster boat or fishing boat at the, at the proposed facility.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of outside of fishing. Like I know, and I know I asked this a while ago, but I didn't get a clear answer. Since we have so much involvement with the MBTA, there is an MBTA ferry that has a stop in Lynn, which is pretty much close to us. I just wondered if there was any.
No.
So, so in order to do that, we would have to have a completely re-engineered facility for that ferry to land that.
Okay.
We, we wouldn't be allowed to bring in a commercial ferry of that nature. Nor would we want to if it's not appropriate. The harbor isn't one of those waters.
Okay.
Well, thank you, thank you for answering that question.
Sure.
Thank you, Sarah. Dean, do you have one, another question?
Yes.
Comment?
So comments on the, these two projects are, has there been a historical analysis done on the parks and the whole corridor? Like, I'm going to read it because I'm not good at public speaking. Has any kind of historical analysis been done to determine adverse effects and how best to mitigate them? That side of Beach Street from the train tracks to Old Net Road, including Reed Harbor, Reed Park, the harbor in Mascanomo is a well-preserved example of the city beautiful movement applied to civic projects of the 20th century. The design was greatly influenced, if not done by Frederick Law Homestead. And the railroad bridge is an overhead trunnion bascule designed by Joseph Strauss before he moved on to do the Golden Gate Bridge. This town might be earmarked to preserve the beginning of the 20th century, much like the town home area preserves the beginning of the 19th century. So that's the first thing is what are we doing messing with this historical rubber? The second thing, right now Reed Park, most of the year, there's a lot of vacant dock space. And has anyone compared the visual cost of this work versus the benefits? Just about every real estate brochure references a scene at Carver and changing this image may adversely impact our property values. Do we need to build all these new transient boat docks for five weekends per year, which is about when the carmon is full? The docks only seem to fill up during good beach weather when the town businesses are already slammed. So there really isn't any added business. You know, if they, if there was during rainy day, that would be helpful. But when it's sunny and all the boats are there, people are also at the beach, so. The slips, so one thing is I'm saying, why develop at all? If you're going to develop though, that slip space would be better served for those on the mooring waiting list. The grant provisions don't allow for this at Reed Park, but I want to make sure that that same mistake doesn't happen again. Where, you know, our biggest need are boaters on the waiting list, but we're expanding all this commercial area and it seems like we're bumping the people who have been paying money to wait on the waiting list. Let's see. Right now, the new moorings are being located out in Manchester Bay where they say pull your boat if a storm is coming. But there could be new moorings to serve our residents in well-protected harbor if we get the town out of the marina business. The taxpayers do not see any income from this as the overhead is too high and the season is too short. I strongly believe that we are better off funding any dredging the same way we always have through grants and savings. And then the last thing is accountability. I mean, Buyan is retiring soon and shouldn't we wait until a new harbor master is on board so that there'll be more accountability for such a wild endeavor?
All right, thank you. I think we don't, we've kind of raised these issues. We've raised, the historic, I think, is a new, new idea, which is useful. We've talked about the visual and the, we're going to ask for financial analysis. So do you, I think.
If I just speak the historic piece?
Yeah, the historic piece is helpful and I think a new idea that we should, should just ponder.
So the progress don't impact any, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I think we can take those as comments right now and we're going to, we're not going to be done with that tonight. And do you have something new to add?
Yes, that, that area from the railroad tracks of Beach Street out to and beyond Tappan has been extensively studied, both in terms of future flooding, a redesign of Mascanomo Park. This is, and, and the necessity, necessity that will come up in the next 50 years of building some sort of berms to protect the buildings on the land side of Beach Street. So there's, there's an enormous amount of work which has been done and which is ongoing. And compared to those things, even 30 new piles is a very small change, in my opinion.
Okay. Do you have anything new to add?
Historical. So when you're pondering an historical use of this harbor, it'd be important to note that in the second half of the 20th century, parts of this harbor had not been refreshed. At the beginning of the 20th century, it was a creek. The federal government did not finish dredging this harbor until long after Mascanomo Park had been designed and built. The nature of this harbor has changed dramatically since the late 1800s, right up through the finish of dredging in 1956. It is not the same harbor and it will continue to evolve because nature is impacting it dramatically. And the cost of those docks down there is about $15,000 a year to staff it. We made last fiscal year $36,000. So that facility brings money, it goes into the general fund. This town contributes. And the expansion to the bridge, once you see the financial analysis, is significantly important.
Great, thank you.
No matter how much it remains empty.
Anything else from the board? I think one of the questions that Laura asked earlier is, um, just to hear briefly from, we haven't finished the har- we haven't, we're, the harbor management plan is work in progress. But Carl, do you wanna just speak to the, um, the harbor committee, whatever your group is called? And, uh, just briefly, uh, cause Laura had asked for people who have thought a lot about the harbor to weigh in, so I think that would be useful. You, you mentioned this on, we talked about it on the sidewalk, but if you could just briefly.
Now, the harbor advisory.
Who, Carl Doane, your address?
Carl Doane, harbor advisory committee chairman. I was on the committee fifteen years ago when Adam Harrison's father ran it, and it was a different harbor back then. But everything was keyed on trying to get things paid for. The federal and the state gave the harbor seventy-five percent of the dredging fees. So it was a different harbor then, fifteen, twenty years ago. Things have evolved. Once the state and federal went, we didn't have any money. And I'd say fifteen years ago, the town almost paid for all of the things that cost today. Tom Smalley was then on the finance committee, uh, and I've talked to Tom many times. He is, is a boater from way, way back. Things were paid for because of the taxes, the boats that were here, the boats are being built, repaired, everything else. And then things evolved and took off, as it has in the rest of, of the country. This is not just a little place where people used to come for the summer and then shut the, the, uh, bigger states down for the winter. It was a very quiet place. People live here year-round. There is no ice, there has been the last couple of years, so that's gonna open it up for more commercial fishing, for more commercial things that go on in the harbor and bring things into the town. Harbor advisory is just try to tie things in with the rest of the town boards to keep it going, to keep the dredging going, so you could have more boats in here from townspeople. Townspeople can't get a mooring. The harbor has, under Buyon, been a great rejuvenation. He's, uh, made it so the lists are correct, the people, that the harbor is making money. There was nothing before he came in there. And it's organized and it's just a small harbor. We've got six or seven hundred moorings. If somebody doesn't come in and pay their dues in March, somebody else gets the mooring. It is very well regulated.
And so as your group has weighed in and feels that this is a, a good plan?
Harbor Advisory Committee, I would say ninety-nine and forty-four one-hundreds, uh, is in favor of this project.
Okay, I want to ask you that other point six is.
Is in favor of the funding that we get for it.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I wanna, um, we are gonna continue this public hearing. We have another hearing with cell signaling. So we're gonna, uh, continue this to our next meeting. And I think what I'm gonna do is have you guys flip it, so we'll get, let's say it will signaling go first next, next meeting, and then take you guys after cell signaling, um, just to be fair, if that's okay. Um, so, um, probably eight o'clock on the twenty-second. I think by the time we, we're gonna be, does that make sense, Mark?
Yeah, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock on the, uh, so to continue the hearing, um, we're just about ready, Mark. Uh, on the twenty-second, so we'll take a motion to continue the public hearing. We've closed the one for Tuck's Point. Um, so for Reed Park and, um, Morse Pier, um, for the twenty-second at eight P M.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, post. Great, well, thank you everybody for coming tonight and, uh, your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Online and, uh, we'll work with Mark to, and see if we can get some sort of visual reference, representation.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Buyon.
Hi, everyone.
Hello. Did you sign, were you able to sign in? If you sign in, uh, the meeting.
Sign in, um, to the meeting.
Yeah, you'll go to the Manchester by the sea calendar.
Yeah, I have the link.
You have the link, okay. Just make sure you sign in without your audio.
Here's the sound, we'll show the sidebar. These are the rules, you know, basically, it is, we, so they got the capability to do. The reason we're not specific again at all, give you a good visual idea. Okay, did you see the file? Did you see the files over there?
I know, those are the existing files.
Yeah, I know, they're there.
It's changed, I, I would argue it's changed the look of takes from the original, anyway.
It's under.
Yeah.
Standing those other little warts around you, it makes it, the music is better.
Okay. Welcome, cell signaling team. There's a small group for that.
Uh.
Lots of people online.
We're wearing them.
Many.
I saw Jacob Knowles poke his head in, I'm, oh, there he is.
And he, yeah, so, uh, many of our team, uh, would be, um, virtual, so.
Shall we open the public hearing?
Yes, we should open the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for cell signaling. Um, we'll call Mary Foley.
Yes.
Hi, Gordon.
Here.
Uh, Chris.
Who?
Sarah votes, yes. Sue?
Yes, here.
Uh, Mark, uh, Peter, and, uh, Laura just stepped out, thank you. Samir, you just have to make sure you join without your, you have to more than mute, you have to actually join without your video, without your audio.
Uh, and, uh.
A little carrot by your microphone?
Yes.
Go up, push up on the carrot and then pick, join by phone or something like that. Yeah, join without computer audio or something like that.
Okay, so, um.
Yeah, you look, you're good now.
I'm good.
Okay, and I'll give you the screen. Okay, great. And if any of the other of your team is gonna join that is, I guess they're, they're remote, they can keep their, um, they can, they'll need their microphone. So, okay, Samir, go ahead, thank you. Thank you for your patience again. We did, uh, put you first at the next meeting instead of the.
Thank you. So ju- just to, uh, set the stage, uh, you, everybody recalls that tonight we're gonna be, uh, dealing with architecture, sustainability, lighting and geothermal. And the presentation will essentially establish that we are meeting and exceeding the performance standards. And so, uh, Samir Sroji is here from H G A. He's gonna do the architectural presentation. And then the rest of the team who's gonna deal with sustainability, geothermal and lighting are gonna be virtual.
So the agenda that we put together for today is, um, what you see on the screen. We'd like to revisit the project goals, but I think it's important to ground ourselves with what C S D asked us to do, that kind of channel what the planning board, also wanted us to achieve. We'll review the architectural and building design, uh, including materials and character and how that meets the performance standards of the bylaws. Then we'll go into lighting and talk about, um, site lighting primarily. And, um, that would be presented by Tao Ham, who's, uh, virtual and is a lighting designer, um, uh, with H G A. Then we thought we can pause and talk, uh, take questions as a sort of, that's a, we segment to, to pause and, and just review together. See if there's any questions. And sustainability, um, is, um, a chunk of, uh, presentations that is divided into four pieces and different people talk to that. Ariane Laxo, also from H G A, is the director of sustainability and will talk about kind of the certification process and what we're trying to achieve there. She'll address carbon and how, what our approach to carbon reduction, both embodied carbon and, um, moves during the life of the building. Then V R plus A, our, uh, M E P engineers will get into, uh, energy and how that relates to carbon reduction in, in the pool. Uh, and that would be Jacob Knowles, who we, who's here, and, um, uh, who else is, uh, Isabel, yes, Isabel is maybe presenting, yes, from V R plus A on energy. And then we have a geothermal system that is designed also by H G A. Uh, Ross Gundes, Gundes from, uh, H G A will be presenting that. And then we wrap it up, uh, and ask if there's any questions that. We're good with the agenda, sort of start. Um, so the project goals again, that we're, we're given as designers to design to, um, were about, um, developing an innovation campus for the future of C S D. It's consolidating their activity, but it's, the key is to really promote their research, uh, in the field, uh, that they work in. And then the selection of the site was very specific to, uh, C S D. That we wanted to kind of celebrate the unique site and restore the ecosystem. You've heard from biohabitat last time about the approach that we're taking on that. Uh, the whole development, both site and the buildings are meant to, uh, work towards a net zero, uh, carbon. And that's part of what we will, uh, dive into in, uh, the segment on sustainability. And of course, we take a holistic look at, um, sustainability, including the well-being of the occupants, which is very important for both C S D culturally and, uh, our firm and, uh, the project. C S D is also very keen about the integration with the community and, uh, kind of being a positive force within the community. And, uh, we, we'll show how that, um, happens. It's a large team, really exceptional, um, consultants that are, uh, put together, uh, for this project to achieve all of that. In the master plan, uh, one of the key, uh, goals that, um, we're trying to achieve is the integration of the architecture and the, um, development into the surrounding, specifically the forest around. And, uh, reversing the damage that was done through the quarry activity on the side. And really, um, bringing back the site, rehabilitating it to, uh, integrate with, uh, with the landscape. So it's primarily, um, organized around the loop road that comes from that water right here. This is the back. And that loop road, uh, is, uh, for both, um, people, uh, employees and visitors coming into the main, um, entry and going into the garage. We are, uh, developing the site in two phases. Phase one is as shown here with the lobby, with a phase one garage and they're both connected. And phase two garage is, where this is to the east, and the building of phase two is, uh, on the west side. By forming this V shape, uh, in, on the side, we're doing a few things, uh, that are important kind of for the way the, uh, the whole, uh, complex functions. There's a kind of a four-court entry point where visitors, uh, come in. And it is also a sort of patio where, uh, employees and staff spill out and grab their lunches south facing, uh, on the upper meadow. The V shape also frames views that are, uh, amazing towards the hills to the north. And they create a, um, what we call an upper quad, which is, uh, sort of an outdoor space that is landscape, also meant for use by, uh, the employees, uh, that has magnificent views because it's high on the cliff. So it's really commanding views. On the lower part, where we kind of meet when we go out there, kind of on the, on the wall, is what we dub the quarry garden. And that is, um, uh, an amenity that the building also spills out onto, and there's some, uh, big landscape, uh, for, for employees and staff to enjoy. One of the goals that also were key in the design or in the master planning is shielding of the neighbor to the north immediately. Because as you saw, it's a very industrial kind of, uh, not the most desirable view. It kind of ruins the, the view to the hills. So we're mounting, um, the north portion. Any excavation that is happening on the side to accommodate, um, uh, these buildings is being kind of mounted and planted. So we create a visual screen, uh, so that you're kind of looking beyond to the hills and, uh, removing the focus of the industrial visuals, which they, uh. All right, sorry, this is kind of slow. So this is a bird's eye view from the north of both phases and how they frame the upper quad, which I'm going to write here. Connected by a sort of pavilion that is glassy that make, becomes the main entry and also kind of the main binding area, uh, for the, uh, facility. And you see here, the north portion of the loop road, uh, with the berming and the planting that I've just described, to the north edge with this ready public being, um, foreground. We'll talk about the V Bs that are both on the building, the lobby, and, uh, foreseen in the future for, um, covering the whole, um, garage, uh, complex. Again, one of the key design ideas for us was the integration into the cliff. There's, the cliff, uh, is about forty feet average lower on the, uh, e- west side and, uh, taller on the east side. And the idea architecturally was to release cascade and, uh, integrate into the cliff. So it's becomes a feature as opposed to kind of the, um, the barrier that it feels today. So this is a view from the quarry garden, looking at the cliff on the right, uh, the lobby pavilion, uh, uh, beyond. And, uh, here a detail of how we, uh, did the massing of the building in keeping with the performance standards um, of, um, the bylaws to integrate into the landscape, into the, uh, kind of surrounding area. The cliff on one hand, of course, uh, the forest and the vegetated area around this. One key thing I'll point out here is that the building is five stories if you look at it from this, uh, level. That makes it only two stories at the upper meadow. So minimizing the presence, uh, up on the upper meadow is a part of the dream. So that is why we're cascading down. And as you can see here, the cascading is actually breaking down the mass to minimize so that you don't have a five-story wall and, on any part of the, uh, complex. So the cascading is happening both, uh, to the, um, south and, uh, to the east, uh, breaking down the mass and making it, uh, more human scale. This is a bird's eye view, uh, from, um, the south side. Uh, what you're seeing here in the foreground is the main drive coming in, uh, parking and, uh, two means of approach to the entry, which is the, the podium right here. One with stairs and one with, uh, maybe a compact handicap, uh, ramps. And again, the, the mass, even on the two-story, um, element on the upper meadow is broken down for interest and kind of connectivity to the elements that you saw on the other side. Um, one thing to point out too, we are screening, um, on the roof, um, uh, some of the mechanical equipment that sit outside and we're screening that with, uh, brick and some, uh, perforated metal. And that's again to visually, uh, reduce the impact of anything, any such elements on the roof. So this is the entry, uh, view and what I would point out on, uh, this slide is as part of the, our sustainable approach is the reduction of, uh, embodied carbon. And the structure in the lobby will be mast timber, which is the lowest, uh, embodied carbon, uh, material we can use. Uh, Ariane and, uh, others will talk about additional, uh, approaches to the reduction of, uh, embodied carbon. There were some questions about lighting in the lobby, uh, and spill out from the lobby. And I mentioned it to people as we were walking around, uh, the site the other time. And I'll, um, mention it again and we'll show an animation of how we're convinced third question from our client, C S D. Are we minimizing the impact of the development on, uh, one-twenty-eight? And we're convinced that we are, uh, completely including any potential, uh, view of lights emanating. on the lobby. And with that, I'll show an animation that we have. I'm gonna stop sharing and reshare just to make that video move better. I think there's an option. Maybe I don't have that option here. I do not. So I'm gonna share again and go to. So there's no audio associated with this. So here's a view from 128. We start by looking at a bird's eye view. It's moving slow, so I'll slow my commentary. And it slowly kind of pans down. Of course, the bird's eye view is not realistic. Just that, actually, the video is very smooth on my screen and very choppy when I share it, but maybe I can turn my screen around at least for the board and see it in a much better. Typically, Zoom has this feature to optimize for video sharing. I don't know if anybody knows technically if there is something that I can do to make that happen. If not, maybe I can just give my screen.
Maybe you could send us a link where it's, we could see it.
We can do that as well.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. So again, we did that animation to be convinced ourselves and convince our client that we meet the requirements they gave us, which is to minimize the presence visually of any of the development, and that's kind of our goal. In our package to the board, we submitted the required elevations in black and white of all sides of the building, both phase one and phase two. Here we show only a rendered version of that, which illustrates way better the kind of materiality of what we're proposing. Like I said, we're trying to connect to the surrounding with one of them being the cliff, and we're using granite. And we're trying to pick granite that is a Cape Anne granite that has a little bit of rose color, because the cliff actually is granite that is not the gray that we're familiar with. Maybe here you see it in town, some of the old buildings, and there's more of a rose buff tone to the granite. So we're selecting that material, and that occurs here in the stepping and a sort of a water table all around the base of the building. In addition, we're using brick in a Norman scale, a brick module in two tones. One is gray, similar and blends with the granite, and the other is again a range of buff tones that really blend and are soft, a very natural color. And everything you see here, including the penthouse, the kind of mechanical level, will be clad in brick and articulated with detail. And we're selecting a color that is a copper tone to highlight some architectural elements within the building that are important to kind of tie it all together. You see those here with these vertical elements and some copings that go around the building. So that's kind of a high level with the different materials. Of course, we have glass, quite a bit of it in the lobby and in certain areas, and that's really to link nature to inside and use outside in daylight. And a lot of that glass in specific areas will be bird safe. And actually, one thing that is really of note, CST elected to use a new technology in glass called VIG, which is vacuum insulated glass. That is used a lot in Europe, but it's new here in the country. And that has the equivalent insulated rating as a six inch stud wall. So we are very excited about that. That is, again, will tie into the conversations that will come next on sustainability, and we're making the envelope so tight so that, you know, energy is reduced through any loss thermal loss through that. So here's examples of these types of materials coming together. This is the kind of mix of Cape Anne type granite that has those tones that I've described. Pictures of the brick, this is kind of the inspiration from a Boston building. And here's the same brick that is being proposed, used on a building live. And this idea of using copper and a copper tone aluminum is something that we've done on a different project that you're seeing right here. So all of these, we feel, come together to really integrate into the background and the nature of the site. Now I'll turn it over to Tao, who is our lighting designer, to take us through the lighting.
Thank you, Samir.
Yeah?
Um, I'm Tao Hamid from HGA, and lead lighting design for the project. And I wanted to start with the lighting discussions with this context where all the light is located in this very wooded area. Naturally, the lighting is going to be blended into landscape. And our main goal is to provide a balance between light pollution and provide also security and safety for people there. So with that guidance, we are wanting to outline the design criteria we established for this project. The first one is for the town bylaw. So I wanted to highlight some of those items that is applicable, most importantly, to this project. First of all, the all the light fixtures are need to be fully shielded, and we need to comply with international dark sky standards to minimize light pollution and light trespass. Light intensity, it needs to be at five point five for candle average. The light color temperatures should not exceed thirty five K, which will render the side with a warm light instead of a cool blue light. The LED light source need to be used to reduce the energy usage, and we also follow the guidance for pole height. The maximum is for pedestrian walkways is fourteen feet, and for the parking and the roadway will be twenty feet. The wall mounted light on the buildings should have twelve feet maximum above the grade mounting height. And lastly, we want to also mention that hours of operation is half hours before the business and after business. Those are the operational hours planned for this building for lighting. We designed to meet all of those standards and outlined here in the bylaw. And I also wanted to emphasize that we meet all the design standards outlined by International Dark Sky. And their inner ordinance, they define the lighting zones, and also have readings for all the light fixtures that proposed for the side lighting. What we highlighted here is we, this project is going to be in a lighting zone two. Within this lighting zones, there are three major criteria where followed. One is called B, the middle one is U, and the last one is G. So I have a diagram here just to explain what those things are. So for U, the one in the middle is for up light. So anything below you see in this diagram is up light is, needs to be zero. So when we select light fixtures, we will follow this guidance for the up light to be zero. And the B is more for the back light. How much light goes to the back of the fixtures is more concerned about light trespass. So here depends on how it's located in the distance with the property line, you have different reading is allowed. For this time zone, we select we have for our project, and the B three is the maxes, maximum is allowed. And most of our fixture selection is in below the B three level. And lastly, want to explain a little bit about the G one. G is measuring layers, and if you think about walking at night, and if the fixture make you feel very uncomfortable, very glaring, that's what this is measure. So all of our fixtures will be on the G one for this project. And because all of those measure we have done, so we anticipate we will earn one lead credit for the project. And the next one I wanted to hear briefly talk about the major site components. The first one is the light poles. They are, as mentioned earlier, is will be maximum at twenty feet tall. So those are showing in red, and they are all facing away from property line towards the project site. And additionally, we have some barriers at a low four feet height would be placed at the most of the building entrances. We have minimum landscape lighting are proposed, such as some pole with the slot, with light is mounted and pointed downs to light block. I can show will be detailed later where they located, as well as some, you know, garden borders as well as handrail light in the garden area. Next one is to, wanted to talk about a little bit the enlarged plan around the main entrance area. We have two major lighting components, which is light pole at twenty feet facing away from property line, as well as the borders to guide people to the entrance for safety. And I wanted to mention, we have submitted the full photometric calculations for the whole site that where you can, those are the point to point calculation as example showing here, that where you can read at near the property lines there, all have read as zero for candles. And I want to show a little bit of larger plan here at Quarry Garden that were in addition to the twenty feet pole light as we have talked about, and the water light around the entrance and the pathway. We do have additional this landscape lighting showing purple here. They are lighting that pathway as well as lighting the nearby landscape and rock to provide level of safeties on the edge of the pathway. And they are also on the pointing down on the pole. I wanted to show some strategies where I've thought about how to use lighting control as a tool to minimize light pollution. Lighting controls for this project is balanced safety, light pollution, and for energy reduction. For exterior lighting, our strategy is during the day, light will be automatically off by photocells. And at night or after, half hours after business hours, a light will go down to a dimmed levels, and the control will be able to accommodate that. For interior lightings, and all the light will be on for half hours before business hours and a half, and the off and a half hours after business hours for majority of the interior lighting. And there is minimal lighting will be left on for emergency and the security. And we will have some strategies to place those more towards inward of the building instead of around the parameters, and then also some of the control strategies that will help additional to, for additional measures for light pollution reduction. So like all the, all the enclosed spaces will have occupancy sensors, light will be off automatically when it's not occupied. And lastly, I think all the interior lights also are optimal to optimize control for flexibility. Okay. Samir mentioned about earlier about the, some considerations for spill lights in the lobby. And for the lobby interior lightings, we do have some, you know, up lights in the, to highlight the timber structures, but they are all in the center of the space that were, will have, will not spill beyond its edge of the building. And the majority of lighting in the space are down lightings, and we have talked about earlier about the control strategies, that the light will be off after business hours. For example, in this space, we would select minimal down lights, not up lights being on for emergency and security operation.
So we think that what Tao described, and it's majority down light within the lobby, and the fact that controls will be, put them off after hours, half an hour after business hours. And a very important thing that we wanted to mention is that this is what exists out there today at the MAC. So this is kind of a pickleball tennis tournament, where these poles are located right here where the tennis courts are. Those are being taken out as part of the project. So those light fixtures that are kind of blaring, you know, lights will be taken out. So we think we're improving on the existing condition enormously. And to the specific question about how much light spill out from the lobby would be seen from 128, again, the video animation of how it, very little is seen of the whole development. I do want to point out what was presented last time in terms of the landscape. The light, the bright green around the perimeter, and specifically in this case, the south side of the loop road towards 128 will be a lot of new planting that is evergreen. So we think we have multiple layers of kind of safety that for us would have not concern about lights spilled from the lobby that makes it on earth to anybody on 128. And this is why. So it's all these layers of things that we think make it go away as a concern. And I think at this point, we said we'll take a break and ask, address questions before we move into sustainability. If anybody has questions about, comments about the architectural portion or the lighting portion, please.
Mary?
I got a little confused. It's, I think, close to one of the last slides that the exterior lighting is on all night. Is that the twenty foot poles around the perimeter of the property?
Yes, mostly, yeah. Well, there, there should, will be some interior lighting as well.
Okay, so then, and what, it says for the landscape lighting, it's a half hour before and after business hours. What are business hours?
Uh, we have, oh, go ahead.
Eight to five?
Eight to five.
Samir? Yeah, okay, thank you. I thought someone online.
And then. My only last question was, and maybe I missed it, is there something new in the packet? Is I know, I think it's been asked a couple times about trying to get that visual from 128. Is I know, I think it's been asked a couple of times about trying to get that visual from one twenty eight in winter time, so when the trees aren't fully groomed. I don't know if that's been put in the packet or not. I haven't seen it. Do we have that?
No, we, I mean, the, we don't feel, there's a concern primarily from the topography. Not as much vegetation. So I think maybe a section that shows how the view angle from anywhere on one twenty eight towards the upper meadow is screened simply by the elevational difference and the view angle. On top of that, there's trees, whether winter or summer. On top of that, there is the new planting that is evergreen. We we feel as confident as we can be about that not being a concern. Of course, we're happy to show that section and and why we think it's that view angle really is the key element. Doing a visual that is trees in winter, it's just a kind of a difficult thing to achieve.
Laura? Thanks, Samir. I think overall, it's really terrific architectural expression and the way that it's really integrated in the site is lovely. I had some questions, just clarifying questions about the light. So Tao talked about the FUG rating with a glare rating of one. So I was just wondering if you could talk a little more about why the one is necessary or why that's the that's the kind of criteria that you're using as opposed to zero, no glare?
Well, the glare is relates to, yeah, ideally, it would be nice to be glare zero, which some of our fixture is glare zero. Again, this is maximum way we can go, which is by defined by dark sky standards and also referenced in by the by law, right? So the we could, the limitation of not be able to go to G zero sometimes is you have to get enough light out to light the the roadways, right, to light the space. So that sometimes has to do with the mounting height or so many other things. The effect is not able to get to be G zero. Again, we have in the submittals, we have noted all the read actual readings for the fixtures we selected. So they are maximum is G one and a lot of them is G zero.
Okay, thank you. And then even with the G one, that's still dark sky compliant. It's considered dark sky.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So this highlighted the box is what the dark sky standards for this project.
Okay, great. And then talked about the interior, the atrium going off at, you know, after business hours. If that's still the main lobby and people are there, you know, kind of in and out later on in the evening. Is there a low light level or how do you?
Then we'll have to have the emergency lighting and truly the experience nowadays go into a stair and it's kind of dim and then it kind of rises up on occupancy.
Yeah.
Tao, just to kind of control my layperson's, is that kind of what we would have in the lobby? The fact that it's dim after hours, but if anybody needs to go through it for whatever reason, it ramps up, is that kind of the control that we would have?
Yeah, 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 you are right.
Okay, is there any signage, CST signage on the site that is lit or?
Yeah, nothing that is specifically lit. We do have and in the package we submitted, there is the outdoor signage, which is granite morm or whatever. We're not putting any specific lighting on it.
Okay.
We are hoping that the light levels that Tao has developed for the site will be sufficient.
Yeah, the lighting, okay.
To it's compliant for eating. There's no actual signage on the building at all.
Yeah.
You you go there, you know where you're going. It's not like you're passing by on the road.
And then my last question about lighting was, it didn't look like you were lighting that upper patio in front. Is that is that correct? I was just trying to understand that diagram. It was one of the closer.
The upper patio, I think Tao, we have a pergola that has some lighting under it. Let me see.
Is that the Cory one, Cory?
That one.
This upper patio that I
Oh, the patio.
Yeah, so the light levels here, I'm going to the next, the light levels here are three.
Yeah, three point four. We we again, the because so many different lighting components here on the plan, we showed the major ones. We did not highlight this one. So if you look at the submittal we sent in, we submitted, this fixture we proposed here have G zero, U zero, everything is zero zero reading. So it's just all the down light component.
From a kind of over trellis or canopy?
Trellis, overhead.
Got it.
Yeah, on the trellis, yes.
Yeah, it's these linear bars we won't highlight and color, but that's for
Yeah, it it doesn't included in the in the submittals, it's just a lot of detail here.
Okay, I get it. I was wondering if it's dark. So the in general, it's safe to say that the pedestrian routes and accessible routes are half a foot candle average for passage after dark, so that's
Correct, that's the target.
That seems totally appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that that's seen about by law.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But not brighter. I mean, I think that's an appropriate level of light, but it's not over light.
Exactly, I think, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Gordon Hutton?
I'm, for the first time in my life, I'm hard pressed to find any critical comments about the building. I think your use of material, you actually use of the existing topography spectacular and use of different materials and textures and forms all over the site. It's just terrific. The one thing I have, having done a bunch of laboratory buildings here, the the equipment enclosure, the roof, the roof scape enclosure here and what it encloses in here. Just 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 for my edification, what would be inside that roof enclosure?
Jacob, are you still on, just so that you keep me in check? We have air cooled chillers that are
Those just HVAC?
HVAC.
That's it?
Yeah. And we've studied kind of how high that screen needs to be so that your approach screens the highest point of anything in there. So it's carefully studied so that it is screening visually, whatever the coolant goes in there.
But forgive my ignorance as to what what cell signaling actually does. But there's no, there's no exhaust fans that they should be concerned with.
There are exhaust fans and I can go to, yes, there are fumers within the lab like this that needs to take care of any potential hazardous fumes and take them out through an exhaust. And we've worked diligently with BR plus A, our mechanical engineers, to put those at a location, again, the kind of the front of this south side is visible for people approaching the campus. And as you saw from the view from the forty bottom, we wanted those in a location where you don't see them from either side. They do need to step, go up above the roof height to make it safe for someone who is out there to clean up the UV array or something like this. And we studied that through a dispersion, a dispersion model of any exhaust so that it is safe.
Just to add that.
Exactly, so yeah, all of that.
And my my last question is just the the mechanical equipment is, it looks like it was designed as a part of the architecture. Wasn't just a piece of mechanical equipment then enclosed. It looks like it's integral to the whole building design.
Thanks for your comment. This was a goal and it is, it is, I mean, you see it here. It was a goal we presented different ways. Typically, in buildings, the mechanical spaces are clad in metal or, you know, and they stand as a, to me, it's like a hat on top of your building. And we wanted that to be really part of the massing, part of that cascading form. And doing it from brick was just as economic, actually less expensive than the metal structure that we do.
I applaud you, I applaud the owner for even considering to do that. It's having had some bad experiences with rooftop equipment and file, this is this is exceptional.
Great.
So let's keep going and we'll take public comment at the end on all of the issues.
Ariane?
Yeah, so I'm gonna stay off camera because I have not the greatest bandwidth. But you've seen some in the architecture and lighting diagrams and renderings, some of the poetry of how this project connects to nature and views. That is one manifestation of the sustainability goals of the project. Another is the pursuit of these certification programs that CST is using to hold them to a third party review of the holistic goals of sustainability that this project is pursuing. So one, the first that we're pursuing is LEED certification. So this is put out by the United States Green Building Council. For anyone who's not familiar with LEED, it's one of the most widely recognized rating systems. And not only accommodates the balance of, they they phrase it as business, people and environment. You often hear the definitions of sustainability as people, profit and planet. But they also, if you can go to the next slide, Samir, balance them across multiple categories. So LEED has a holistic view of sustainability for the project. And there are certain prerequisites that you have to accomplish in each of these categories, as well as additional credits that go above and beyond and that helps direct what level of LEED certification you achieve for your project. So this is a balanced system and we're pursuing LEED gold for this project. So we're accomplishing or aiming to accomplish many of these credits, including the lighting one that Tao highlighted earlier with the dark sky compliance. The next rating system that we're pursuing for this project is the WELL Building Standard. And WELL is really focused in on the human side of sustainability. So human health and wellbeing is the name of the game. Though among that, you can go to the next slide, within that focus, WELL is holistic, looking at the organization's operations, their HR policies, as well as design considerations. So this one is partially a part of the design team's role. And a lot of it is CST's operations, facilities and HR are looking at which of their policies and operations practices already align with the WELL system and where would they be interested in making some some upgrades or updates to accomplish a higher level of certification. So another third party rating system accomplishes a really high performance focused on wellbeing. And they just like LEED have categories that they focus that on. But you can see that their categories look a little bit different than the LEED ones. So there's nothing here about energy, for example, because they're really focused in on human health and wellbeing. So from a built environment perspective, there's overlap with LEED in some of these categories with like air and thermal comfort and materials. But there are also new categories that don't overlap with other standards such as nourishment, community and mind, looking at the mental health of people inside of a WELL certified space. And then the final certification that we're pursuing, this is sort of an add on to the LEED certification, is LEED zero carbon. So this speaks to the goal that Samir showed at the very beginning of working towards a zero carbon campus. This looks at the amount of total carbon emitted associated with the project, removing the total carbon avoided. And there's, it's essentially an equation working through, all right, can we get our carbon emissions as low as possible? And then there is an offset component at the final stage of this to achieve carbon balance. This looks at everything associated with the building construction as well as the transportation required for employees commuting to the site. So it's a holistic standard really focusing in on carbon reduction. And we're going to dig a little bit deeper into carbon now with the remaining of our topics. And we'll sort of close out with a few examples of other sustainability strategies on in on this project. So first, we're really digging into how do we, how do we work towards a zero carbon campus? And this is a balance of embodied and operational carbon. And so what we have here is a graphic from the Carbon Leadership Forum, one of the standards organizations that's really helping elevate methodologies and workflows around carbon reduction in the built environment. Embodied carbon is a big part of the cycle. So embodied carbon is associated with the material extraction, manufacturing, transportation and construction to a site on the front end of a project. And then on the back end, there's embodied carbon associated with maintenance and repair and deconstruction and waste. So for this project, we're really focusing on the front end of embodied carbon, reducing that as low as possible while thinking about the back end. And then operational carbon is about the energy use that a building uses. So this graphic here is just demonstrating a typical building. And in this case, this is a graphic from 2020 because 2030 is on year ten of the building life, just showing an example of how embodied carbon and operational carbon might be associated over the life of a building. And one thing I just want to draw attention to here is that 2030 line is really associated with a lot of global carbon reduction targets. So in this project, this project is being built, you know, within this time span will be open by 2030. The upfront carbon is really critical to reduce as much as possible so that this project can contribute positively to global carbon emission reductions. Even though over the life of the project, there are energy associated carbon emissions as well. And the calculation over life is a balance of both. We really are looking at reducing as much as possible in both cases. And then in this case, because we're looking at a very energy efficient project, we're more associated with that lower percentage or lower number. So for embodied carbon reduction strategies, we have several that we've even talked about a little bit today. You've seen Samir talk a bit about the mass timber structure in the lobby. So mass timber is a much lower embodied carbon structural material than steel or concrete. So we're leveraging it where it makes sense programmatically, which is the lobby. We're also looking at lower embodied carbon materials for the heavy hitters that sometimes people, you know, sometimes that aren't even visible. And so you can have high performance project products that are also lower embodied carbon to produce. So insulation is one example of that, hidden behind the walls, but makes a big difference, which we select. And then facade materials, interior finishes, and then we're also looking at optimization. So selecting products that have the lowest embodied carbon possible that also meet the performance standards and requirements, including some newer territory like MEP systems, mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems. There's a lot of ductwork, there's a lot of wiring, there's a lot of product that goes into a building. And there's embodied carbon associated with all of that. So our firms are working together with CST to look at where we can reduce material and where we can optimize with our material selections. And next, we'll pass it over to operational carbon for the BR plus A team to take us through that. Jacob, you're on mute.
Is it star six?
How about now, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Now we hear you.
Is that better?
Yes.
All right, so I hope, I hope everybody's starting to see a pattern here where this is one of those magical dream projects that you get once in a lifetime that are trying to do everything as sustainable as possible. So building off of what Ariane was describing with the overall total carbon, we wanted to work with cell signaling initiative to really be best in class in terms of energy performance. So what this slide is showing is each one of those bars is a different building in Boston or Cambridge. And this is based on their actual measured energy data. In red is their fossil fuel consumption and in yellow is their electricity consumption. And the Y axis on the left hand side there, you see one hundred, two hundred, three hundred. That's the energy use intensity. So that's how many thousands of BTUs per square foot per year that each of these buildings use. So it's an intensity of consumption of energy on an annual basis. And on the very, very far right, you see CST. So this is, this is this project achieving seventy one percent projected reduction from the average in terms of total energy. But even beyond just that best in class reduction in total energy, we're really focusing on eliminating fossil fuels. And so you can see we're getting to roughly ninety nine percent, approaching a hundred percent reduction in fossil fuel consumption compared to that benchmark data. So really a leap forward in terms of a truly efficient, low fossil fuel design for this building.
I would highlight one thing that is important about this graph, we're benchmarking against other lab We're benchmarking against other lab buildings. And lab buildings are big consumers of energy. So the fact that we are way better than all of these is the big statement.
Um, hi, I'm Isabel Doran. I'm with BR plus A on the Sustainable Design Team. Uh, I'm also working on the energy modeling, um, for this project. And in addition to benchmarking, we also wanted to highlight the projected carbon emissions that were calculated from our energy model. Not only is CST best-in-class for energy performance, as Jacob had mentioned, they're also set on becoming a leader for utilizing cleaner energy. With current Massachusetts emission factors, we're showing a 37% reduction in carbon emissions against a code baseline. CST is also focused on providing cleaner energy in the future to reach the net zero carbon goal that will be required by the Massachusetts Climate Bill enacted in 2021, uh, to become carbon neutral by 2050. And as the grid becomes cleaner, those carbon emission reductions will continue to increase. And you can see, uh, in the graphs to the right, the progression of fewer carbon emissions, until eventually we will aim to hit that 100% renewable mark. You can see in that bottom graph that, um, 99% reduction incorporates the renewable energy that's being, um, designed into the project. Go to the next slide. We also wanted to provide a high-level overview of the energy conservation measures that are included within the mechanical design. And this includes 100% outdoor air system, um, as well as energy recovery. And the design is also using cutting-edge technologies, including a ground-source heat pump for geothermal, um, heating and cooling that will allow for clean heating and cooling, and will help target those carbon-neutral goals. Our current projected EUI, or energy use intensity, is 101 kVt per square foot, which is significantly lower, as Jacob had mentioned, than labs, um, that we're seeing in Boston and Cambridge. And this project is also pursuing, uh, the Mass Save Incentive Program, which can provide funding for energy-efficient projects. In order to qualify, the building must show 40% reduction against a code minimum baseline, uh, which you can see in that graph. Where with the highly efficient design, including the geothermal heating and cooling, we're currently showing a 49% reduction against that baseline, which is significantly under that 40% requirement. So we're confident that we'll be able to qualify for those incentives.
Hi, good evening, everyone, Russell Knudsen. I was fortunate to be part of the geothermal design team on this project. So under this beautiful building and beautiful developed site is a ground-source system, ground-source heat exchange system, or we're calling it geothermal for short. Just for a little bit of scale and context, the, there, that rendering on the right side just shows you how deep these, uh, these piping systems are installed. So this is a 600-foot-deep proposed system on this site. There are roughly 72 vertical bores. These are sealed pipes, uh, so they're, they're, they're not exchanging water with, from the system to the ground and from the ground to the system. These are, this is a closed-loop piping. It's, uh, this is the best, by far, best way to electrify, eliminate natural gas usage on a, on a building site and electrify the heating and cooling of the building. This is, uh, there's a lot of excitement right now for geothermal systems. These are, these are incentivized substantially from the federal government, as well as the state, uh, Massachusetts, um, for, for ground-source heating and cooling. One more thing to mention, uh, Samir, if we can go back, I, I, I did gloss over one point that we are often asked, which is, um, the, the fluid that circulated through this piping system, I did just wanna mention it, is a non-toxic fluid. So it's a water mixed with a food-grade, um, antifreeze solution. But it's a, it's a, it's an antifreeze that is non, non-toxic. We can, we can move to the next slide. The, right now, the, the planning location for this system is in the blue shaded area. Again, we're, we're planning 72 vertical bores. And, uh, the future, uh, the site master planning, uh, has, has identified areas for a future AD8 bores in the red and outlined areas. Those would be, proposals to be installed as part of the Phase Two building project. I think we are back to our note.
Yeah, so as we close out the sustainability section, we have this, um, axon metric diagram, just to highlight a few of the additional strategies, some that we've talked about here. But, um, I just wanna speak to, this is a really unique site. As Jacob said, it's a once-in-a-career opportunity to really bring together people, uh, with the ecosystem, with nature, in a really efficient, low-carbon way. So the connection from the inside of the building to views and to nature and daylight will be just outstanding for people using the building. And at the same time, we're doing this, uh, in a way that, you know, utilize bird-safe glass, as Samir talked about earlier. We're real, we're thinking about the dark sky compliance for nighttime nocturnal animals. We're really, uh, bringing the access to the park to the north of the site. There's a lot of ecological restoration that's happening here in addition to, you know, rainwater, graywater collection, designing to future, um, rainfall levels. So this is truly balancing that goal of people, profit and planet enhancement in a holistic sustainability approach. And with that, I think we'll turn it over again to questions for the sustainability portion, or, or whoever you wanna take it.
If I may close with a statement, um, I asked Mark, um, what should we be presenting about sustainability, uh, in a, in a big picture? And he said, actually, the, uh, performance standards in the bio doesn't have anything on sustainability. So what, what we're doing here, as you can see, is exemplary in terms of what, uh, a building should be like. We're all very excited about it, the whole team, as you can see. And maybe this come, becomes a precedent for, uh, next downplay. But with that, again, we'll open it for questions on any of the, um, information that you heard.
I have two quick questions. I assume that you're meeting the stretch code and exceeding it. We are a stretch, stretch code community, but not a specialized option code.
We are.
Okay. And then the other thing is, I'm looking at your, uh, this last slide. And first of all, I think you are, I can see why Jacob says it's a once-in-a-lifetime project. And I've seen your, this is, this is way, uh, not a requirement of the special permit, but more of a curiosity. You know, the, you have the same, uh, visual at the BU building, which BR plus A worked on. It would be great to include education materials about the building for visitors, for the public. That's not a requirement, obviously, because it's sort of outside of our, but I hope that you are.
We're more than happy, I'm sure we'll be peddling our performance.
The wall at BU that looks very much like this would be a great model. It's a really, um, and the website and all that, so, what?
In the building?
Yeah, in the building. If you get a chance to see the BU building, it's got this amazing, um.
Display about the future.
Videos and, and, but anyway, um, so, so, uh, I'll, um. And then, uh, you mentioned, Jacob mentioned you're having the ground source. But then in the discussion of the architecture, you're having, um, air source heat pumps on the roof. So it's a combination. Is that, is that, am I led to believe?
Yeah, can you, we do have, yeah.
And so then my.
Very helpful, Samir.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, and then my question is, what about noise? Have you measured the, have you modeled the noise from the air source, uh, heat pumps on the roof?
Go ahead, Jacob.
So the, the, actually, there's a, it's a hybrid of both ground source and exhaust source. So we're capturing heat from the exhaust air with, with a heat pump system, using the heat recovery chillers in the building. So the only outdoor equipment is basically, as Samir was showing earlier, the tips of those exhaust fans, which of course have to be outdoors because you have to exhaust the air from the fumettes. And the other is the air-cooled chillers that are basically a, a cooling-only system that, um, would only run in the summertime. And basically, any, any building like this would need some way to reject heat in the summertime, similar to what we have here. And because of the screening and, you know, the, the distance from any other properties, it's actually a very low risk of this being a, a noise nuisance. Samir, I don't know if you wanna talk about any of the noise modeling that was done.
Uh, we have not done noise modeling, not to answer directly. But as you heard from Jacob, this is, uh, supplemental to the normal running of the building. So, uh, and there's no real close-abutting neighbors. We didn't think it's necessary, but, um.
And then the other question I have that didn't come up was, um, we, we touched on this before, which is the electric demand issues in the region. Obviously, you're reducing your electric demand if you have an EUI upset. Are you doing demand management, demand response to your power generators? Do you do demand response?
I don't, I don't think that, yeah, I don't think that, I don't think that CST is currently engaged in, in that program. But something is, I know, I know that it's something that Peter Mudo thinks about.
Yeah, okay. But for the region, it's also important. Okay, more?
Great project in terms of the sustainability and the resiliency features. It's really, um, you are stretching boundaries here. It's really terrific to see. And I love Sarah's idea of the, the wall at BU in addition to the, all the amazing, uh, building-oriented things. I think the site tells a really good story too about habitat connectivity, water quality improvements, um, trail network and so forth. My few questions are, you talked a lot about the renewable and, um, energy-efficient technologies to provide energy. Did you also, I mean, to get to that, you know, bottom of the graph, you must also be thinking about the demand in terms of air changes and, you know, the kind of lab, the, the energy uses in the lab.
Absolutely. Starts with kind of us selecting low-flow fumettes. That's kind of the biggest driver, as you probably know, from, um, uh, that work. So we will be specifying low-flow fumettes and minimizing the amount of ventilation air that goes in, uh, to, to the labs. By use of, uh, chum beams and active chum beams and.
Are you using an air cutie at all?
We are specifying air cutie. And of course, the, no, no, air cutie actually sniffs the air system in the lab and determines if there is enough, uh, levels of hazardous fumes that need to kick in the, um, ventilation pipe. So that, uh, it, that is done to really reduce, because typically you don't have that problem. And there's, uh, in labs, you're using, as, uh, Isabel described, uh, outside air, a lot of outside air. And you, you don't wanna heat, heat it, including that. Minimizing the load is key.
And lab gases? I'm assuming you have a need for lab gases and continuity?
We do. Uh, there's a nitrogen tank, there's a CO2, uh, tank, uh, all being done with the right, meeting all the codes and, uh, fire safety.
And natural gases too, I would assume, or?
Uh, we have natural gas only as backup to boilers.
Oh, okay.
Uh, and is that accurate, Jacob? Just to make sure I'm not.
Yeah, we have, we have a fossil fuel backup, just for the, basically the extreme worst-case scenario of some system failure or if there's a power grid outage.
But there's no natural gas used in those.
Okay, okay. And then the last two questions, these are all sort of on different, hitting different topics. The bird-safe glass, I, I see that you're incorporating that. And I know you've got some big glassy areas. But how do you determine where you actually need the glass? Is it elevation-based or is the?
It's elevation-based. And it is, if you go for the LEED credit that determines, it, it's prescribed.
It's prescribed.
So we are, a lot of the glassy areas will have it. And it, it's specifically is concerned with where birds fly, which is kind of tree canopy height. You would think it's way up there. It's not actually, it's really within a certain range.
Yeah.
So of course, everything that is glassy within that, and from experience on other projects, anything that is cleared through, like glass and glass on.
Yeah.
That is where birds kind of get fooled about flying through a space.
Right.
So you want that. And it's, uh, simple trick at a certain pattern that makes it safe.
Right. The last question was on the location phasing diagram about the wells. And you were showing phase one, phase two.
Yep.
And it looked like the phase two were in parts that you're going to be landscaping in phase one?
Actually, we're being, uh, very careful about not doing that. Basically, the edge between, especially on the west side here, this will be the lay-down area for building phase two.
Okay.
So, uh, the landscape will be minimal, just to kind of make it look good. And it's, uh, and, and the same, actually, on the east side, it will be landscape. But because we're gonna be anticipating the, uh, structure of, uh, the parking. So that it makes sense that we are kind of disturbing the areas and not finishing the landscape in the areas where the additional wells will be put.
Okay. And then the side of the left where there are additional wells, is that under the next phase of the building? No, it's just.
No, no. We're, we're staying away, although like the BU project example that Sarah mentioned, has all of these geothermals under the building.
Right.
You're kind of putting yourself in, in trouble in case anything happens. So it is safer to just do geothermal walls in the field, without any, any structure.
And then there would be a subsequent phase two landscape plan that would address the disturbance there.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And then just staying on those wells for a minute, how deep did you say there? Or 600 feet? And that's where the reason you, you go to different depths. You're trying to optimize, and we did a test well to figure out where is the right temperature between that, and we're trying to balance the number of wells and the depth there to get the most of this thermal, uh, exchange.
And is there bedrock down there too?
All bedrock.
Okay.
We've, we're pouring through rock.
Yep. One other question, this is a BL2 lab? Is that correct?
It is BL2.
And if cell signaling's business were to change or sell the building in some future date, if it were to go to a different level, what ki, what kind of permitting has to happen to have that happen at a BL3 level or, or?
My partner, Mark Allen, is the.
Yeah, sure, Mark Allen, he's GA. The, the labs would have to be significantly redesigned. And the systems would be quite significant to redesign. So that would, um, in a minimum trigger, trigger building permit. There's also some, um, some other permitting operationally that would need to be in place.
So if the special permit had a condition that this is for a BL2 lab and any additional, uh, um, level would require revision, revising the special permit, reviewing the special permit, would that be a hardship?
Mark, I, I mean, based on what Mark just said, I, I don't think so because it does require redesign to make it, uh, possible to have VSL3.
Yeah, you know, CST would probably prefer not to have too many conditions placed. But it's, it's hard to imagine a scenario where they would need that particular flexibility.
And then the, I'm not sure what your next phase, next part of your presentation is. But in, when you talked about, uh, LEED and also the, we, we didn't touch about it on transportation. Do you have a plan for any, um, carpooling program or, uh, you know, minibus? Or what, you know, uh, that, that kind of thing in the operation plan?
Ariane, I, I know that's the reason we are, uh, not achieving platinum, uh, achieving gold. Can you explain what we know about provisions under the LEED credit?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Samir, you were a little bit muted. Can you repeat the question?
So Sarah's question is about the transportation aspects of the LEED credits. And whether CST has any carpooling programs and, uh, anything that would help achieve those credits.
Yeah, so CST's policies around transportation will support the carbon reduction, um, goals and the calculations for that LEED zero carbon. Some of them will be assisting with the WELL certification. But actually, the transportation credits for LEED are very, very, uh, specific. They're looking for a little bit of, uh, parking for programs like, uh, carpooling. But other than that, it, it doesn't really help you achieve the LEED transportation credits to have, uh, carpooling access as policies. They're really looking more for public transit and they're very prescriptive about what they're looking for. So in the location and trans, if you go to the next slide, actually, Samir, in the location and transportation category, there are many credits that are essentially prioritizing urban sites. And so this being a, um, uh, more, you know, rural location that doesn't necessarily have multiple modes of public transit, meeting the prescriptive requirements of. meeting the prescriptive requirements of lead, we're actually not achieving several of those credits in this category, which has essentially, as Samir said, kept us out of that platinum territory.
But what we know from the design is they prioritizing bicycle riding and storage and showers and all that amenities that come with that, charging stations for parking.
Yeah.
Vehicles, et cetera.
Lots of sustainable transportation is enhanced and supported. It just isn't necessarily on the carpooling side to getting us very far for lead.
Okay. Why don't we continue? Do you have more?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Mary, do you have a comment?
I just wanted to follow up on the electric demand question. Do you, and because KPN has an obvious grid shortcoming, do you have, I saw some numbers on a slide, but do you have like the daily or yearly electric capacity numbers?
Beyond plus A, do we know what the electric anticipated consumption would be for the building?
Do you have that, Isabel, from our report for the total, total electrical energy per year?
Um, we do have it in the report. It's not in this slideshow, but I can get those numbers. We have that from the energy model.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other comments from the board?
Just real quick, did either of the other CST facilities have any lead certifications?
I'm not, not gonna have to show. I think the.
I think there's a logo on the door at, at the dam.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, any comments from the public? I'm trying to. Maybe you can stop sharing, Samir, unless if we need it back, we'll grab it.
Yeah.
Martha?
I would love to speak up and say.
Okay, say your, name and address.
Martha Farmer, 12 Bridge Street, Manchester. And I worked with cell signaling for many years and with Newland BioLabs as well. And Newland BioLabs has done an incredible job. I've been to their building. I believe that's where the sort of. Do you guys involved in the design?
No.
Gorgeous. And they've done a lot with art that is installed outside. And the Coen family has quite an art collection. I expect to see some of that associated with this building as well. But, so I have, I do have a question. Will there be public access? You know, right now in the bio labs, you could just go, go in and wander around grounds. Will you have that kind of access or will you have event space, at least in the evenings when the boys are gone, when you could have events there?
So, yeah, the CST leadership was keen on having the site be publicly accessible. We are providing a trailhead parking and access to the trailhead connecting to that. That was important. The facility itself is controlled, so not, everybody can go in at a current time, that kind of thing. We didn't talk about, I mean, there is, there are spaces in the building that can accommodate an event or something, but we didn't really talk about that being part of the program. So it has to be questioned to CST, but.
Because they, they do occasionally, and certainly Newland BioLabs does occasionally pull events. And it's, so I, it's thrilling to me to have such an extraordinary building get built here. You know, we could be, we could become known for something besides the eponymous movie that is so. But, but it is, it just, I, I've been. I've known quite a few people who work at some single, the business model is wonderful. People don't like to leave. They get employed instead. So it's a good, good company to work for. And I just think I, this, this town will benefit so much from having this here. And we probably, we'll have to tell you, it's confused the tax.
Great, okay. Thank you. Any other public comments? I don't see any online. Any other comments from the board? I already brought up the tax issues. I know that plant, the FinCom is reviewing the financial analysis.
So they're agenda tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. So anybody who wants to attend that, feel free. They'll give us a report. But thank you for providing that information. With that, I will take a motion to continue our hearing. Oh, wait. Sorry. Darren, sorry. No, no, sorry. He sat there through patiently. And shall I ask you to share? I give you the, the opportunity to share. That's.
Limited comments, so it's not exhaustively.
Yeah, sorry. Didn't mean to.
Go ahead.
Have you sit there all night? For those who don't know, Darren represents Weston Sampson, who's our peer reviewer. You should be able to share.
Yes, yeah, no, I have permission. So thank you. My colleague Frank Getschel is on the line too. So we just have a brief presentation. Tonight we'll be touching on the outdoor lighting standards, the noise standards which were discussed two weeks ago, and the geothermal system considerations. So just to dive in, the outdoor lighting standards, we're now on our supplemental peer review memo number three, which we issued this afternoon. So we just have limited comments on the lighting. As was mentioned, there's minimal light trespass and the bylaw required, requires that the applicants are minimizing light trespass. We identified one area near the MAC that does have light trespasses at a maximum point six. Right over here on the western side of the property, again, the bylaw doesn't require illumination of any light trespass. It just requires that it is minimized, permit or elsewhere is minimized. And I, as mentioned before, the project is DARSCAC compliant. So we're just flagging that as a, an item for the, for the planning board's review. We did get an update on our initial comment from our April memo related to the loading dock. We would request additional lighting. The applicant had noted that that has been added to the plans and we're just requesting that that documentation is provided to the planning board just for verification. And our last lighting comment, as was kind of exhaustively discussed today, I'll pull up the other plan. It's tied to the atriums. Just in the atrium area, we were just, we had, and from the initial peer review, a concern about lights village, obviously that's facing the highway. And it's been discussed, the hours of operation, the downlighting, all that from today. And the applicant had indicated that they will be finalizing that design. I don't think the interior lighting is finalized, so as it's finalized and there's potentially additional photometric information that should be provided to the town as a recommendation from us and Sampson. The next topic area is the noise standard, which was discussed last week. We just had two comments on that. First is the applicant had just noted they're using some coverings of the blasting and we were just looking for the sound dampening information for what that is. It's not showing on the drawings. And then also discussed last week was hours of operation of blasting related to the noise standard from two weeks ago. I believe the applicant had requested as a condition or a waiver that the hours are shifted before 8:00 AM just so they're not overlapping with the school time. So we were just flagging that discussion in the last hearing. So with that, I will transfer over to Frank to go over our geothermal system comments, which are also fairly limited. We just have three comments to run through. And I'll stop sharing. I can pull up just, I'll stop sharing. There's nothing really visually to review.
There's like, is somebody else sharing?
Uh, no, there's, I see nothing like visually on the geothermal system to, to review.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, any visuals at this time, but I've had an opportunity to, to review the information that's been provided so far by the applicant regarding the proposed geothermal system. And I provided some comments on it because, you know, I looked at the bylaws and the issue is that the bylaws currently don't have anything specific to geothermal systems. However, they do have a groundwater and surface water protection overlay district that does discuss impacts regarding, you know, site development. So I kind of targeted those and looked at them relative to what's being proposed specifically because you have a cold water resource that's been mapped by the DEP that's very close to the site, about 500 feet away, Sawmill Brook. And then you also have a transient public community supply well that also is identified by the state, I believe, that's located over at the storage facility. That's also within about 500 feet of the site. The information that's been provided by the applicant was a generalized weather regarding the potential for the impact regarding thermal impacts on the groundwater resources. But it was based on primarily some generalized information. It was not necessarily site specific. And what's key about it is it does identify that if the system works as, is theoretically optimal, which is via convection, you know, using the rock itself to absorb or exchange the heat and cooling, that's fine. But if there's evaporation, which means the groundwater will move that heat away from the site, that is something that is really not addressed. And the, I had an opportunity to look at the GZA report, which does look at the bedrock at the site and appears there's a fault that runs through the site. So faults are breaks in the rock. That's how groundwater moves through rocks, is through breaks and fractures. So I've requested information on the two test wells beyond what's already been provided. Specifically, I was looking for the logs to see if the driller encountered any water bearing zones, what the yields might have been associated with that. Because as a hydrogeologist, that gives me a general idea as to what kind of movement of groundwater from the site towards the stream or towards a nearby well might be. So my comments are really based on looking for more information and addressing those issues. There's a, two phases of bore holes that are going in. And maybe some of that information can be gathered and then used to address these comment. But right now, the existing information does not allow to address that impact, at least based on evaporation as a mechanism for moving, you know, thermally impacted water, groundwater away from the site towards either that cold water resource or towards that nearby supply well. That's all I have to say at this point.
Great, thank you, Frank. And that's, that was the entirety of our comments on those three topic areas. The memo we've issued is cumulative, so we tracked additional comments from the previous hearings. Questions or?
Questions from the board for Weston Sampson?
Yeah, this was discussed at a prior meeting, but we left us kind of an open item. The request for relief from the six inches of topsoil over the whole site. And we were proposing, or it was proposed to put four inches on certain area where.
The upper meadow.
The upper meadow. And so as a way of evaluating the ability that upper meadow to take, I'm just wondering, how can we resolve that? You know, is it a question for the wildlife biologist who is saying what these different habitats might be? And is that, is that depth sufficient? So just wondering, Weston and Sampson, either Weston Sampson can address it or is it a question for the wildlife biologist that we can somehow close out that request and have some assurances enough for the planned, immunity of the plant?
We tracked it as a waiver that the planning board would have to approve reducing from six inches to four inches.
Yeah.
And we were comfortable in terms of erosion slope stabilization with four inches based on the landscape architect's presentation two weeks ago and how they, the plantings that they were providing, meadow mix.
So you were comfortable that the wild meadow, the succession meadow, I'm forgetting the name of it, but that is sufficient.
Yeah, and the three to one slope that they put on that area, they are going to stabilize this, I think they're steeper slope areas than looking at our stabilization and just the general, that sort of outside area.
Yeah.
It's enough that would be a workable, can't take, preserve erosion, just form a whole control. It's going to say so with perspective.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thank you. Thanks. All right, anything else? All right, now I'll take a motion to continue the public hearing to 6:30 on July 22nd. Second? Peter's second, I'm sure. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And look, you look like you're.
No, I was just going to ask if there's some way that we could prepare for that meeting. Obviously, we've gone through the performance standards.
Yeah.
There are some open issues with Weston and Sampson. I would suggest between now and then, Matt from Hancock and Darren get together and resolve whatever is outstanding. If there's something that you require from us at that meeting, if you could let us know in advance, we're hoping to try to get closer to the finish line.
We are too.
So.
Mark and I talked about that today. I think that there's some conversations that happened with the town engineer and thoughts about our Atwater Avenue so that maybe you and Mark can coordinate on that and come back to that as, as, I think the open issue was safety and pedestrian safety in Atwater Avenue. So I think, and I'm hoping that maybe we can have a discussion and reach, get to the point where we're maybe even able to close the hearing and start working through the issuance of the permit. That would be my goal, is to actually get to a point where we can close the hearing then or shortly after that.
And if anyone on the board has, thinks of something else between now and the next hearing.
Send it tomorrow.
Email.
Yeah.
I'll be back to whomever on their team that's appropriate and we'll try and.
Right.
At least address the issue for that meeting.
I think, as we've talked about various things that you've been jotting down, it might be conditions or concerns. We'd send them to Mark so he can begin to.
Would it be helpful if, if I were to, we've talked about a number of waivers.
Yeah, you can provide this.
Probably be appropriate to give you a waiver list of our proposed waiver list. You've also talked about conditions.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't want to preempt whatever you have in mind, but we could work on that also.
Yeah, I think we.
I won't, yeah, I won't surprise you.
Yeah.
Just a few.
I think we, yeah, that would be great if we can kind of have.
Okay, we'll, we'll coordinate with Mark.
Great. All right. Well, I think we, all in favor, we voted to continue to 6:30 on the 22nd of July, that's a Monday. I think some of you are joining by Zoom. And Mary, were you able to sign some, go to the town clerk and sign that you watched the last meeting?
Uh, no, do I need to?
Yes, yeah, there's a Holland's rule form which we'll need to.
Thank you, everybody.
Collect at the clerk's office and then.
We have a couple more things tonight before we.
Four steps of hearings.
To stand up and stretch and.
Bring that to the next meeting and yeah, we'll keep it in the.
Thank you, everybody online. Please feel free to stay, but a little bit. So next is Martha Farmer and Steve Carhart. Martha reached out to me and to Mark about a. Proposed renovation to their home and whether or not we would be open to waiving the requirement for three parking spaces. So I invited her, as we sometimes do, to come and have an informal discussion with us. This is not binding on them or on us, but it's often helpful for people, town residents who are trying to figure out what they're going to do next to, to share. And I do have, I, it didn't get in the packet, but I had your sort of hand drawn scratch. And maybe what I could do is share the photos that were in your, that would probably be really good. So why don't you tell us what you want to do and.
Not sure where I'm supposed to.
No, you could just have a seat. It's fine. You can. You can sit, stand, whatever you want. Tell us what you want to do and what your question is.
Stand, I don't object on that. Um, so.
Thank you.
Can I, I can't hear.
Sorry, Mark. They need to be quiet.
Okay, so basically this started with, okay, what are we going to do when we can't live by ourselves here? We looked at some of these other places and it's like, yuck, don't want to leave, want to stay in Manchester. How do we age in place? What will it take? And a friend of ours who lives down the street from us, Linda Crosby, whom I'm sure you all know, and David Crosby, who took, was several years, required round the clock care at their home. They have an apartment on the third floor, and they had caregivers in that apartment, round the clock, 24/7, to take care of David. And that, they didn't have to leave their home, Linda is still where she is and a very much vital part of the community. It was a terrific example. And we thought about, well, why can't we do that? And we have a half-finished basement, three quarters finished basement. It doesn't, it has a laundry room in it, it doesn't have, it's not set up as an apartment, but there's a, it's large enough to put a small bathroom and kitchen and laundry service in one area, and then the rest of it is like an efficiency apartment. And we would love to be able to do that. We figured we could rent it for the, you know, until such time as we need to have a caregiver there. But we have two off-street parking places. There are two parking places in front of the house on the street that are, it's zoned for residents only, although that, the sign was knocked down 20-something years ago, and nobody's ever put it back. And I don't think anybody realizes that it's zoned to residents only, but it is. And certainly on beautiful Saturdays, beach party takes place even on Bridge Street. But, but it is, it is, there's room for two, two cars out front and two cars in the parking area.
And you're in the general district.
We're in the general district. Two doors down from us, there's a three-unit place that has three parking spaces. And on the corner, there's a two-unit place that has zero off-street parking, but those are grandfathered. And we understand that. So there's a third photo in there that will show you what we would have to do to do a tandem.
Okay, so you two.
You'd have to.
Somehow to resolve.
Put in an astronomical amount of fill. And, and it would, and, and it would, I mean, right now that's how.
Conservation Commission.
Right, Conservation Commission isn't going to want to do that. Plus, you'd still have to have, you could have access down the steps, but it's just, it would be, if we had to do a tandem, we wouldn't.
Ready.
And I don't think Conservation Commission would let us do it anyway. So, so we're basically hoping that we can add one unit of housing in the, in the general district without having to add a parking space. So that's, I'm not sure that there's much else to tell.
So it seems to me you can, by right, you can create that second unit in the general district. So that's not a problem.
It's parking.
It's parking, and I think you probably have to go to the ZBA to get a variance for the parking.
Well.
And I think you could show the.
I've been back and forth, and I was told to come here.
Yeah.
Well, we can't grant waivers for parking, I don't think. Maybe you should, have you got to talk to a lawyer about this?
I talked to Mark Rustic and I.
Yeah, talk to me.
I talked to.
Well, we haven't had you spend any money yet, so that's why we wanted you to come.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here, yeah.
Make sure you got, yeah, I think, as you talk, I think it is a ZBA.
Yeah, I think it is too.
It's a, so you go to make a request for a variance to the ZBA.
So that's, okay, so that's a $2,500 permit.
I'd have a conversation with Sarah Melish first.
So, we did, we did.
You did, and she said, copy it?
She sent me here, so.
That's interesting.
So I'm not, I'm not sure who's, who's responsible for it.
I think it's the building inspector.
But no, but the, but he needs to have a variance.
And Paul Orlando also said that I should talk with you guys. Yes, exactly. I've been, you know, like.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fair. I mean, it's just, it surprises me that it hasn't come up, and that there isn't a.
Because I think people just do it, they're not nice enough.
Well, see, I know too many of you, I can't do that. No, I don't, I don't, I don't want to play a game.
Yeah, no, 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 and it, you know, it used to be more, I think, in the planning board's hands, because we were doing curb cuts and verify the off-street parking and things like that, but I don't know that we've had a specific.
We used to have four cars that we managed, so.
But where did the, where did they go? You can't fit three in there?
Two, two in front of the house.
Oh, it's a tandem, you don't want to do a tandem, gotcha.
The point being, the number of parking space does not dictate how many cars you have.
Well, the, there is, it used to be that people parked with their wheels on the sidewalk because the center line was actually drawn down the center of the road. The center line has been moved to make, make it clear that they're parking there. And, and so, and there is, I mean, there's now routinely parking, and it doesn't seem to be a problem, although I do notice that Randy Wood, his son who's here now, has a comb behind their, their master car, just to make sure people don't run into it. But, but it is.
Well, Tim, why don't we have a conversation with Sarah Melish and tell you what you're going to do?
That's fine.
Where would the third car go if it wasn't in your driveway?
In front of the house.
Which is, which is owned residential parking.
Yeah.
So it's.
Did I make a, Laura, general comment that this is an illustration of the impact of the parking minimums, not a dense downtown, a dense and short downtown, because.
Right.
You know, here's somebody who wants to live and age in place and, and stay in town, and you look at that site, and there's no good way to put more parking in, and why? Like, why would you do that to the downtown, to make these numbers? I just think at some point, we may want to rethink having parking minimums or parking maximums or some kind of range where there's a little more flexibility.
There's, I understand that there's some anticipation that the state might make some ruling that you end up being stuck with, but, but it could change that.
It is possible that the, in, when the state, if the state legislature passes their new bond, housing bond law, part of that is creating ADUs by right, and I don't think there's a parking requirement, but I'm not sure I have seen it.
Yeah, well, it's obviously not an ADU, it doesn't change the footprint or anything.
Well, it is, it's an ADU.
It could be considered.
Well, okay, it's an ADU.
I'm sorry.
That's exactly what an ADU is.
Gail also said, don't call it an ADU.
Well, I also think the town is generally looking favorably on small incremental housing, housing down in the general downtown area, so.
Yes.
This is a case study, here it is, we're trying to do it.
Yeah.
And trying to do it above board and come.
Right.
We don't, we don't plan to do an Airbnb kind of thing. There is a, an organization that you can work with for visiting nurses who come for like a month to a few months. Sure, yeah, sure. And I have a colleague who has done that with her house in Ipswich, and, and that's, you know, that was just.
In the general district, you can have two units, whether they're equal size or one is tiny and one is large.
But, but there's a parking question.
But there's a parking.
But there is the parking. So I apologize for making, giving you the runaround, but we're, I think the thing to do is we'll talk to Sarah Melish, and then it seems to me that probably is a variance question. And, but I think your coming has, once again, underscored the, the challenges of parking and the pitfalls of, of high, requiring more parking spaces in the dense downtown. So we appreciate that.
You just, the more parking spaces you require, the more ground you cover with the asphalt.
Exactly.
And that, that's not beneficial, but the, the, the parking space we have, there's pieces of granite that the water goes through. So it's, and we're, you know, we're, we're quite close to the water, so we're very conscious of needing to protect that space.
And you're not increasing the footprint of the building either, so.
No, not at all. I don't know if you know, but the salt marshes behind us was originally just a mud flat. Well, not originally, long ago it was a salt marsh. When we lived here, it was a mud flat. And we worked with the.
Conservation Commission.
Yeah, and the, and the great meadow marsh folks, and we planted 5,000 Martina plants in there, which, after we got rid of the domestic geese, which we were allowed to do, we, they, the Martina survived, but the domestic geese, when we planted, they just ate them, just like that. So the.
Have to get rid of the geese.
Wild geese don't bother them, are not enough to cause damage.
Do you get rid of geese? A dog?
Ask.
Wild geese, no, no, they weren't, they were, they were, we had a lot of geese, but these were, these are domestic geese. They were white and gray geese.
Oh, domestic.
They were farm animals that were feral.
Oh, I know.
That people have released into the area, and those we were allowed to remove.
I think we're standing in the way of.
I apologize, thank you for coming and staying till 9:30 at night, and I apologize.
Thank you for taking the time.
We're all learning every night as we go along here.
Well, this is, this is an issue that's going to come up again.
Absolutely, yeah.
So figure out what the right answer is, and I don't, you know, I understand why the parking restrictions are there, but it, and for the benefit of more housing in the area, more.
Small housing.
The small, eh, housing.
Yeah, I agree. Great, well, thank you, and we will see you back.
Thanks so much.
Let me get your things there, thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion. Anybody, can we review the vote that June 10th minutes? I didn't see them, but those not yet?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, they were, oh, maybe, maybe just in the month packet, okay. Updates, so we'll, we'll take the June 10th minutes at the next meeting. Do you want, I don't know if it's still in the mail. MBTA zoning, the package was submitted.
Yes, it was.
To the state.
Yep, gonna have to wait till September probably to hear the answer.
Okay.
At the earliest it's not, but.
Maybe, we'll see.
We'll have more, well, we probably will have a working session, I think, of the task force and the coming up at some point to.
Yeah, I think we should.
Create contingency plans if there is, if the state interprets things other than how, what their regulations currently say.
What is the planning board's role in the communication of the MBTA zoning?
I think the task force right now is taking lead on communication, there's a communications subcommittee, Sue's been reporting out on, on that.
Because I, I'd like to voice some concerns I have with the latest agenda that was posted. Some things struck me as, as.
Latest agenda for?
For the communications outreach subcommittee. You know, the, the task force is an arm of the planning board, and so some of these things were like individual plans to.
No, it's not, it's appointed jointly by the planning board.
Correct, correct. With the planning board having responsibility for the bylaw. But it, it said communicate with spokespeople slash influencers. And I've heard names float around of who these influencers are, and so I'm just concerned that the, well, come to the meeting, or tune in on Thursday. I'm expressing my concern to the planning board that, that if the task force is communicating things out to the public, which seems like, it seems like it wants to influence rather than educate and inform with facts and data, it's more of an influence campaign, and then asking other people in the community to do this influencing. It just seems like we're getting three and four steps removed from the planning board and the planning board slash select board of communicating out data and facts to people. So as a planning board member that is still responsible for this, I have concern that we're not communicating in the right way.
Well, but we've held for, we're holding for public forums to get the information out about the bylaw, and I think there's a presumption that, I'll, I'll hold on that, that I, I think the, the intent is to say, what is the bylaw that's being proposed? How was it developed? What is the, what is, what is the law, what is the bylaws being proposed, and what are the steps, so.
Can I just.
So you've signed for a minute. So one of our challenges, I mean, if you tune into the meetings, we do stick to the facts and the data. And one of our challenges as a committee has been how to rebut a lot of the wrong information that is out there and gets posted on, you know, Facebook sites or whatever. And so our thought about, you know, just speaking informally to people we know to make sure people know what the facts and data are, rather than relying on some of the social media information. That's all the term influencer, spokespeople means.
So what, so, so, and I appreciate that, but I did see your meetings are at 1 o'clock. I mean, people at work, myself, cannot attend at 1 o'clock, so it's hard to attend, so I watch the meetings afterwards, but I can't be there live. So could you just describe what an influencer spokesperson is? Well, no, I, but so that you give them data and then they go out and talk to other people? I'm not, I just, I'm just not clear. Can you answer that, can somebody?
I don't, I don't know what your question is.
Yeah, I don't really know how to answer that.
I don't understand your question. Could you clarify your question?
Yes, I'd be happy to. My question is, Susan just said an influencer is an influencer spokesperson, and I'm just asking, is, does that influencer spokesperson get somehow taxed, tasked to go out and speak to people?
We can't task anybody to do anything.
Okay, so I don't, I, I guess I just don't understand what an influencer spokesperson is.
Maybe, yes, maybe it's the inappropriate word, in which case we'll change the language and say, we're going to do outreach to other citizens in the town to make sure everybody understands what the MBTA law is all about. Is that maybe what it is?
I'm sure you have many informal conversations about it with people you know. That's, that's what.
Oh, of course, I mean, I'm sure we all do, I hope we all do, that's kind of our task.
The thing, we're just trying to make sure that the, that the message that gets out there is based on the facts and not on misinformation.
Okay, so I was misinformed that there were some targeted people in town to be influencer So one, I got misinformation, so that's fine. But, so yeah, I mean, I just, I'm just want to state that I, you know, we have to be clear that this is about educating residents, and it's not kind of like a marketing campaign. You know, I'd like to see if, you know, if the planning board or the, or the task force communication subcommittee is reaching out to the residents that are in these districts, right? Are we doing mailers to residents? Are we meeting with them in groups?
The town has to pay for mailers, so that's a very expensive thing for the town to do, and there's very limited money for that.
There's also an outreach plan that Tiffany put together that's posted on the website, which describes all the ways that we're trying to communicate with the citizens of the town.
But the other thing on your point about, we are going to do a town-wide mailing, making sure everyone knows. making sure everyone knows what the law is, what it means, and describe each of the districts. And we have been, in communication after communication, townwide, we just got something in our tax bill, you know, with an update. We remind people, scan this QR code, look at the districts online. You know, Tiffany is constantly, every week, putting something on the town's social media, saying here are the links to the districts. There's a lot of information out there.
And I agree, and I think there's a lot of people that never see any of that. So I'm just saying, if I was a resident within one of these districts, I would hope that the town would send.
I don't think, I don't think it's appropriate for us to do that, actually.
Right, I mean, and you're singling out people living in a district, I mean, there are different views. Is it a benefit, is it not a benefit?
They might be very happy, yeah.
It needs to go townwide, not just to the people who live in specific districts.
Well, I agree that, that mailings should go townwide, but I, you know, I, I see many towns send, are sending out to the residents, the homeowners in these districts that are being impacted. And it doesn't have to be a negative, it can be a positive, they might be thrilled to be in it. But I think if your home is being rezoned.
The zone's always being rezoned, that's the kind of misinformation.
It's not, because you could have your neighbor have a completely different structure than what was there currently.
We are placing overlay, no one's being rezoned.
Of course it's being rezoned.
No, it's not, what we're doing is we're adding an overlay district.
Right, so, so.
Rezoning implies that the current zoning goes away and is being rezoned. It's not what's happening.
It's being, okay, then, just like influencer, maybe I used the wrong word, it's being additionally zoned. So, you know, if you're somebody and you live in a single residence district and you expect only a single resident's going to be next door to you, but you get something in the mail and say that might not be true, I think that's beneficial. I mean, sure, we can debate this all day long, but, you know, I'm discouraged that as a planning board member mentioning something, all I do is get attacked as opposed to saying, all right, well, think about that, or sorry, that was confusing. You know, it's very difficult communicating with this board and, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, but I will still voice my opinions.
Well, we hope you do.
Okay, great, any other updates? It being quarter of 10, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, oh, I'll second it.
All in favor? Great, thank you, everybody, for your questions tonight.